I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Testing?
Here.
Bush?
Here.
Chambers?
Here.
Dahl?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Lindsey?
Here.
Stuckey?
Here.
Any communications from board members you want to bring forward?
I just want to say I've been seeing some questions about, just facts about the current building, school building, and facts about what's going to happen with the new school. And so I think that, I know that we're just starting, but I think that there's a lot of interest in what's going on. So I think it's good to just be as common as possible as far as getting information out to the public and, you know, as soon as we can. And with Joel and planning those sessions. Yeah, that's all I'm getting is kind of the questions about what's going to happen and what our choices are and that kind of thing.
Okay. Anybody else? Do you have anybody sign up?
Yep. It's probably Joel.
Can I speak later during the topic or do you want to?
Sure.
Is that an option?
That works. It's fine. Is there anybody else in here who has anything to say? Okay, move on to two more minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I'll vote in favor simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we're going to, before we go into the informational items that are listed, we're going to have Brad from HSR. We're going to put him first so he can get it back on the road.
Well, thank you very much for doing that. Tim, of course, is with me tonight. And what we've got, where Tim's going to hand out, we've been working on a draft of a mailer, fact sheet, if you will. And this is certainly a draft meant to be reviewed and looked at. We hope to, within the next couple of weeks, to perhaps finalize this so we can get it to everybody. And so I want you guys to make sure you take your time. We don't have to figure it all out tonight, but spend some good time thinking of what maybe we're not saying that we should, or maybe some things that we're saying that maybe don't need to be said. So Tim, maybe I'll let you walk through that.
Yeah, absolutely. So this is a draft form, so it's meant very much via draft. And we've had some conversations to get us to this point, but we're basically looking for some more input to keep moving this process forward. Couldn't agree more that we want to get as much information out as we can. We also want to make sure that what we're saying is as accurate as we can, also as informative as we can be. So you'll notice on the top, we have some consistency messaging. We'd like to continue this logo or something very similar throughout all of the communication going forward. This is set up to be a fact sheet. It's meant to be distributed just like I did here. It can be sent out in the community. It can also be set up to be mashie mailed. So this is very much set to be folded in half and then mailed out as well. So very much dual purpose. We're trying to lay out quite a bit of information in these pages. What we're trying to do is give an update of what happened since November 2018, the step that's led us here, some of the advantages of a one campus or united campus, some of the different differences between this. Everybody was asked about proposed timeline, if this were to be successful, you know, what is the timeline associated with moving forward. Of course, giving more information where you can find different open houses, different community inputs as well. Just also announcing April 2nd. The approved referendum ballot language, as well as the overall needs. We also wanted to definitely highlight the tax impact and how this is different than maybe what was in November of 2018. And then focusing on the solution, or the conceptual solution at this point. So we do have a conceptual site plan of a layout. We can talk about that a little bit more here. And then some of the advantages of that. And then where there's more information for, different voting information as well.
And we understand that there's probably going to be more questions generated from this, and that's a good thing. That's what we want. It's almost impossible to provide all of the detailed information on some of these components. So just kind of giving a big picture, broad-brush viewpoint is our goal here. So it's not, we don't want it to look complicated or be complicated to read. We want it to be somewhat straightforward. So...
In conjunction, there will probably be multiple mailers that we're talking about here as well. So we want to hear feedback. And basically, if there are feedback from the community, we want to incorporate as much as we can in this and then a previous or a follow-up material as well. Traditionally, we put a lot of emphasis on the community open houses. If there are, you know, input sessions with them, we want to definitely promote people coming to the halls as well. So that's a major component. A lot of times, this is very much done in conjunction with your website, similar to how you did it last time, where if you need or want more information, that's a great resource to really reach out to and really take advantage of. Because some people want the short version, some people definitely want to dive in more. We want to have both options available to everybody.
Well, at a quick glance, I think this looks really nice. But on the very first page, under if referendum is six, if referendum is acceptable, the board will pursue the new school. If not, we'll proceed with, I think it needs to say, we'll proceed with the 11.9 referendum because it needs to be very specific.
Be specific about that. We did talk about that.
Because I've had a number of people already question me, and I said, if the new school does not pass, we automatically go back to our other referendum, which is the 11.9.
And all of this talks, to be honest, you know, we generated through some conversation, but we want to definitely continue that dialogue. You guys know your community better than anybody. We want that type of feedback.
Not with this, but has there been any more information on the foundation?
We can talk about that, yeah, if you'd like us to.
Yep.
We've had our structural engineer, along with our civil engineer, and Tim and I, kind of observe what's going on out there and try to get into a little bit of detail with that component. And what we know is true is the addition of the building is put on solid foundations, basically, continuous foundation wall.
So strip footing.
And the existing building is put on more pier foundations. And you know that the addition is raised up a foot or maybe a few inches. And so it's, all the water coming down the hillside that kind of collects there. And what we believe is happening is finding its way under the building where the pier footings are, okay? And that's why we're seeing these cracks continually kind of come back year after year. I know they get fixed by the crew down there, and then next year, they're back to some lesser or more degree, maybe depending on how much rain we get, okay? But so that's kind of what's happening. So really, we're thinking that there's some erosion, basically, little mini rivers that are kind of happening through underneath the building. And it's a, it's kind of a big deal in a way.
Yeah. So when the light bulb really went off in our mind was what changed when that building addition happened. So there was no real concerns of foundation and slab until that building got built next to it. So the addition happened. So we really started diving into what changed. And what changed was the way that the water fundamentally moved on that site. So it's always been hillside leading up to the building. But before, there was an avenue for that storm to basically work its way around the building more naturally. When that building was happened there, if you look, there's, that was raised up, and there's a hole spot right where that receiving is. And if you look at the side of the wall, there's actually quite a bit of staining on that wall, indicating there's water that's been there, in conjunction with the clay that we know is on site there. So we started to look back in history, appreciate looking into some of the existing documents more, but we got some of the geotech when that addition was built, and they brought in all-new fill. And the reason they brought in all-new fill was there was a lot of clay content in there. And so when they built the new addition, they basically put it on suitable fill. However, what else happened was they trapped water in that location. So because there's about an eight-foot retaining wall on the other side, on the downward side, we actually now are trapping it underneath there, and there's nowhere for it to go. And that's what's creating the pockets underneath there, and that's what's creating the movement. So at first glance, we thought it was just the slab itself, the concrete slab moving, heaving, you know, well, concern, not as big of a concern as maybe we were thinking at first. Then we were sort of diving in, we noticed in the exterior walls, we brought levels and lasers to actually verify it, but there's movement on the perimeter walls. Those perimeter walls are very much load-bearing. There's a pier system there, so there's more concentrated load as well, further making it no more complicated. So to potentially fix that conversation, there's a couple of different ways to go about it. We could go about it superficially, you know, put down new finishes. We know there's going to be continued movement there with the clay content in particular. We don't recommend that you basically fix it cosmetically. For that kind of investment in that facility, we recommend that you do more long-term type fixing or approach to it. We don't believe it's any immediate structural concern, you know, that's the other thing we did verify. However, when you make an investment, we want to make sure it's a long-term type of investment, and that you're truly doing it well, and you aren't going to experience the same kind of movement that you are right now. So to fix it, basically, we got to remove the clay underneath that building, and we got to fix the storm. That's not only underneath the slab, but that's underneath the foundations as well. So we're talking potentially vertical piles underneath the foundations to really reinforce the structural bearing walls, also removing the slab and replacing it.
And this work, obviously, that shouldn't be done during school whilst schools in session. It needs to be done during the summertime. It's a big deal. It's not just a...
Kind of a cost estimate?
Yeah, well, we're estimating. I mean, because we don't have all the engineering aspects figured out, but a good, maybe conceptual budget would be maybe 20% of the total. So 20%... 20% of 11.9. So that'd be about $2 million.
We're talking $2 to $2.5 million.
Fix that.
It could be. That'd be probably on the high end.
Right, but then we have to take that off of the plan that we have.
You need to.
Well, again, we already have that worked, right?
As Tim talked, you know, if you're going to spend and invest in that kind of money into that building, we would maybe suggest that you fix the main bones of the building first and foremost, before you invest.
Because if you're investing in windows, doors, finishes, mechanical systems, electrical, you're making a significant investment. But if the shell of the building is going to continue to do it like this...
Continue to do that.
You know, that's a conversation of the long-term, you know.
Yeah. And again, not that the building's in jeopardy.
No, I mean, we'd have 11.9 million referendum for ex amount of things. That $2 million's going to have to come off of that in order to repair that building. So you're not going to get everything.
There was already a allowance for that.
So did you look at the previous budget that got us to 11.9?
We did. And we understand that this would be a more significant investment than what was previously allocated. We do believe that it's much more than just a slab conversation.
More than just leveling the existing floors. I mean, you could do that.
Right.
But perhaps we'll come back.
If you look, there's, because it's continually painted, you can see definite movement where the column line meets the walls themselves.
And that's, I haven't heard anybody that hasn't went down through the elements to walk through it. Because I walked through it, and I was shocked.
And talk to the people, talk to the teachers.
I haven't been there for 30 years.
Talk to the teachers that are in those towns year to year, year after year. And they'll kind of give you a good story.
But, you know, what we want to do is further geotechnical information. We know, you know, basically, we know by observation at this point, and we believe that that'd be the corrective fix to be able to go forward. And we know that that'd be the long-term type of solution. However, there are other ways of achieving it, possibly, but there's combination of our clay movement underneath the building as well as the storm that's just not properly getting out of there.
That would be a big part of the solution, is getting the storm waters solved, the stormwater problem solved by rerouting, doing some, you know, give major storm drainage system that's going to get that water out.
What would that consist of, Brad, in a drain? More than a six-inch sewer?
Yeah, I'm guessing more than a six-incher. But we'll want to get the water out of there quickly, when it does, when we do have those big delusions of water rain, because there's a tremendous amount of water that comes down there. And you've seen it ponding there, I'm sure. So it's maybe a series of drains, maybe it's a trench drain, that gets water out and around and out of there.
And part of the difficulty of it is just getting it out and around, getting the water to actually flow that way, not relying on pumps or anything like that. Some of the rock would be going right through the building.
Underground.
Underground, yeah.
Very costly. The only problem going around the perimeter is running water that far, the grade doesn't really go in your favor.
It doesn't help us. But there's a solution. We can fix that.
Do you think by the March 5th open house, we might have just a comparison of what the current budget for the remodel is versus maybe a revised budget, knowing what you currently understand of what's been done with the foundation?
Yep. We can get into some greater detail there for you.
I think what we're wondering is how much of what we were hoping would be in the remodel would need to be sacrificed
Right.
in order to preserve the foundation, you know? So I think that that's an important thing for voters to know before they go to the polls.
I'm not sure what was budgeted for that initially, but...
It says renovations for the first floor, which includes locker rooms and office, a small room, is $2.2 million.
Okay.
And I think the foundation's included in that first floor renovation.
Well, that's something we'll figure out. And there's site work that we need to consider. There's renovation of existing building, which means infrastructure, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, maybe some plan reworking. And then there's the addition component. So all three of those, we can kind of get a better handle on what we think that that might be, and compare it to kind of what was thought before. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Fair enough?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Yes, sir.
In that, we talked last meeting about the new building being air-conditioned, so certainly roll that into the elementary school. Would you agree, Doc?
I'm sorry, very good.
We talked last, at the last meeting, the new whole school is going to be air-conditioned. Is that a possibility with that remodel?
With the budget?
Yeah.
We'll find that out. We'll figure that out. I'm sure it was imagined that it would be air-conditioned, knowing that there was some, the intent of the...
Yeah, we were never told. Oh, the addition was...
We'll figure that out if it's within that budget.
Yeah, we wonder, I wonder if it's palatable, because it's not only good for education, but it's also good for your facility to be able to get better de-ification.
And then the question was asked, too, does that include new windows in that remodel? So there's just some questions that the board asked, and there was never an answer given.
Okay. Well, we'll do a breakdown, as soon as we see it, to try to...
I guess we're really looking for input. I would echo, you know, we want as much communication out to the general public as we can.
Well, we kind of talked the last time that I'd be ready to go with that whenever. And then we have a quarterly district newsletter. And last time, the referendum, the second mailer was kind of like inserted into that one, just to say it's a cost, and we're mailing that anyway. And then the postcard reminder is kind of the third thing, so. So, yeah, whenever they put the green light on it, that would show up.
So, Joel, three of these will go up?
Yeah, sort of. That one's a standalone. And then a lot of the information will be similar, but it'll be in the district newsletter, because we're mailing that anyway. And then the postcard reminder.
How many does the district, until it goes out?
I'm supposed to have all the contacts ready to go by next month, but we'll see if that happens. There's like a two-week lag period then after that. So I want this first before the other.
Joel's already given us some really good feedback on this. That was at 10:30 last night. So she's working overtime, just, you know.
No, we really, we did really appreciate it.
Yeah. And very thoughtful, you know? She obviously knows the community and goes to projects and what folks are talking about. So, and we want you guys to do the same. Not necessarily at 10:30 at night, but...
Got any other questions, sir? So if there's, anybody has any changes to this, get this to Brad and Tim.
You don't have to give it to us even tonight, if you have changes or things that come to your mind over the next few days.
Yeah. We'll shoot for Friday.
Friday, okay. Or Joel, give it to Joel.
Definitely one of the big components, you know, the reason why it's on the front page, is talking about the one united campus, just some of the advantages potentially of being on one site, also some of the traffic flow and safety improvements that that would allow as well. So we did have a good conversation with Todd.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I'll bring that over here. Is this in your packet? I was able to touch base with Todd a couple days ago. And Todd is very thoughtful, obviously. He knows buses and knows what he wants to accomplish. And we came up with a couple different scenarios. And there's a variety of good solutions here, we think. When you guys pointed out that the property that you have going to Fountain Street, it's intriguing, even though our site line doesn't go all that way down. It's right here, it goes. Our concern was, okay, where does Highway 39 end, and where does Fountain Street start? Because the DOT may have some impact on that, okay? Todd thought that we were okay, where the property connects the street, that it might be Fountain Street there.
So what they always like is they always like a joining with another intersection. So there's a driveway access right where your property line adjoins. So through conversations, we have some options there. We like the idea of separating the buses as much as we can. So anytime we look at a site, we always want to separate the vehicles and the buses, different modes of transportation, different scales. So we like to isolate them. So what we're showing is a complete separation between the car and the buses. The nice thing about this bus location is it can serve not only middle school, high school, but also really serves the elementary school. How we get access is potentially through here, maybe a little link between here, maybe for emergencies, maybe more. But what previously shown here, especially when you look at this intersection in particular, that's a tougher intersection for buses, you know, they currently use it, but there might be some further options.
So we kind of, Todd and we agreed that this isn't probably the best option coming in here, like our initial ruling did. And the other thing Todd pointed out was, it sure would be nice to have secondary exit or access point, if need be, to this bus area. And that's why Tim talked about, maybe there's a gate here, where 99% of the time, it's just shut, you can't get through here. But if you open a gate, it gives you the option of getting out of there, okay? That's maybe one solution.
Maybe, well, maybe there's a large event going on here, and you want some further parking. Open up that, parking it, now it becomes a playground during the day, and then parking it.
Additional parking. So this whole thing could be parking. So some intriguing ideas. And we also talked about maybe coming in down here somewhere. Once I start drawing this, that's a long ways. So I'm saying, boy, you hate to spend a ton of money on a road that's going to get you to a point where you can do this. So it's doable, but it didn't make quite as much sense to us. And initially, it did, but not so much anymore. But that's another option, okay? And the beauty of this is, you know, Todd can come in here with his buses, park, pick up elementary kids initially, because right now, you pick them up about 15, 20 minutes before you come up here. So these kids get picked up, maybe five, 10 minutes later, the middle school, high school kids come out, and the buses don't have to move. And if there's some elementary kids that haven't gotten on the bus yet, they still have the opportunity to get on. So there's a lot of positive things there in our minds that come to surface.
Especially just knowing some of the challenges on this current site, some of the interaction that's happening currently with the buses and the vehicles. Just create a more dedicated drop-off area, additional parking, I think, will meet certain needs for the elementary, middle school, high school, also, you know, for larger events as well.
So again, in a nutshell, we see this as a very positive thing for the elementary school and the middle school, high school. And it's also going to clean up this over here tremendously. We'll see some big benefits there, I think, in terms of functionality, efficiency, and safety.
The other nice thing about this conceptual planning, and I know you guys see it before, but some of just the views and take advantage of the natural terrain itself. So this does necessarily lend itself to just opening up. We have, you know, nice views out both these ways. So keeping some of the parking more in between, some of the parking lots, and then having more green space, I think is definitely positive as well.
Okay.
And sloping the water away from the...
We certainly can do that.
Yeah, to be honest, the way that this addition on the site is taking advantage of the natural terrain. We're not trying to dig too much into it. So it's utilizing the existing geography very well.
Lots of benefits. Any other questions? Otherwise, we're kind of done what we need to do, I think.
Just opinion that a playground here by itself, that's huge for us, too. At the current site, it's doubled as a parent pickup in the afternoon.
Right, right.
And it's never gated. Tough, you know, tough car and off the road, but it looks very good.
We're excited about this option for sure. Yes, sir?
You didn't answer this now, but I already had people ask about, you know, with the new building, creating energy efficiencies, making it energy sustainable, just not only, you know, to, you know, protect the environment, but to instill that culture in the kids, and then also to save the districts some money, right? So I think addressing that at least at open house, you know, and bringing that to force as far as what you, what will be highlighted there. I'm also seeing, you know, that there's grant money available in Wisconsin to do those things. So, you know, I think we would be interested in that if possible.
We've seen a lot of co-op programs, either with solar and different strategies like that, where there's minimal or no investment upfront, and be able to incorporate those strategies. So there's a lot of different options, especially when you look at new construction, because we can control the thermal level. We can really design from square one itself and really achieve some of those things that maybe are as palpable in the renovation. The other big component of this is because it's new construction, because there isn't as complicated of a construction phase in schedule, we aren't necessarily paying expedited fees for a contractor to meet expedite schedule. So there's built-in efficiencies for a new site, for new construction, because you don't have that inherent expedite schedule kind of request as well.
We can start exploring some of those, you know, interesting funding options for solar, you know, some of those kinds of alternative energy kinds of methods. We're doing some of that in some other districts as well. But also, it provides a real kind of a new face to your elementary school. And again, we will study those funding options for both buildings, okay, whether it's existing or new. Okay? Okay? Thank you very much.
Safe trip home.
We can leave this one with you again.
Sure.
Send that up, sir.
Can you just set it over there on the wall?
Yeah. Good evening. Be safe in the snow.
Can I move on to state education management summary?
I would let Dr. Dunn and Joel speak to it, since I spent more time in my hotel room being sick than I was able to attend sessions, although the ones I went to were very bad. Although the ones I went to were very valid, very worthwhile.
Do you want to go first?
Sure, I can go first. I didn't write this nice little report because I thought we probably want to get in and out here tonight. But I highlighted three sessions that I went to that I really enjoyed. The first one was titled "Our Mission to Make Every Child Future Ready." It was by the Pewalki School District. And Pewalki is one of those districts where if they're presenting, I'm usually going to go. They're kind of just one that I think is doing a lot of things right. So they showcased their graduate profile, which is this packet here, and it highlights the skills that the district needs necessary to graduate. I was misled by this though, and the superintendent actually addressed this. He said, "We're totally going to redo this because people see this and they think high school only." But it's really all of the skills that they need broken down by the building. So they learn how to contribute, create, compete, and it goes on and on. And the interesting part about all this was, is it said that it really brought leaders from each building together to have important conversations about what's required for graduation. Not just at the high school level, what we think about graduation, that we should be thinking about it all along, what kind of kids do we want to create? So that was kind of interesting to me. It almost felt kind of like a little obtuse of the strategic planning process, but I thought that was a really good session. I went to Meaningful Community Engagement by Columbus, Wisconsin Heights, Frederick and De Forest. They use a vendor called Future Search. But again, it's kind of like a strategic planning process. The idea behind that though is that you need to be having these conversations regularly, not just when you're doing a strategic planning process. And then letting it sit on the shelf for three to five years until you decide to do your new one. You need to engage your community to feel genuine and not superficial, which is, people can tell when you're faking it. And when you only come around once every three to five years, either to ask for money for a referendum or pay be part of our strategic plan. But then you're never engaging them in the time in between. They get that idea and it doesn't usually sit well. And they said that communication is incredibly difficult, but yet it's one of the most important things we do. And of course I agree with that. Another one that I liked was "It Pays to Create Champions for Your Schools," and this is by the Winnemawnee School District. The hallmarks of the school district's efforts to engage the community include proactively communicating the vision, clearly articulating the district's strengths, creating relationships with communities, and welcoming people to the planning table. So again, a very similar theme. "You're supposed to be authentic and transparent, a sustained deliberate communication strategy equals trust." And I tell people that all the time. That's not something that you can just say, hey, we're going to start a communication plan when we want a referendum. It doesn't work that way. You have to be building this all along, and I feel like overall we do a pretty good job of that. Simple reminders about saying thank you, celebrating accomplishments. That's always something that I know as educators, we're humble and we don't like to do that, and our staff will admit that, you know, they're not in it to celebrate themselves. But yet we have a lot of strong educators in our system that really do a lot of great things. And I always really wish them to talk about themselves a little bit too and celebrate those successes. And it's about engagement, not asking for money. That was another reiterating theme. I think just overall for the convention, it just reminds me that when we're so busy doing our day to day work, we sometimes lose sight of the overall goals because we're working hard every day. But when you go to a convention like this, it really raises the level of dialogue of what other people in the state are talking about, other superintendents, other school boards. And it reminds us of the things that we should be focused on when sometimes we can get distracted. So it's probably my favorite convention of the year, and I say that even over my dedicated school PR state conventions. This is, it gives me a different outlook on what's important to education in the state, so. Your turn.
Great job. Okay. I just basically typed this out just to help me think a little bit. Basically it's kind of a summary of the workshops that I went to. So there were a lot of nice workshops on, you know, post referendum building projects. So I got a lot of nice tips from that. I went to a presentation about the, from the Little Shoe School District, which did an $18 million remodel expansion. So they talked a lot about just the whole process as they went through. Talking about, you know, weekly meetings with their core committee, you know, reviewing bids very carefully before they're finalized. Like finalized by quarter, the products and materials and like that, it's just double check. A lot of it was make sure you double check everything. You know, make sure all the contracts are reviewed by an attorney. This district also worked directly with some vendors instead of having like the project manager or the architect designer do the negotiating with the vendors. They developed little committees from like community members to say, work with the furniture vendor on picking out the furniture or working out the interior design as far as paint and fixtures. And they got people together to work directly with the companies that were hired to do that. They said that was a really nice experience to get community members involved. And it was interesting, this board was fairly hands off during the project. There was a board liaison on the core committee, but they also had like a building manager who kind of coordinated the whole project from a district standpoint. And kind of acted as the point person to make sure that we were staying on budget and on schedule. So I don't know who that would be for our district, but the one thing that the board members did say is to just keep an eye on the contingency fund. You know, that's put into the budget and just keep track of who is in charge of the contingency, whether it's the contracting company or the design company or whether the district holds the contingency funds. Because then you can track what it's used for and how it's being used and that kind of thing. As far as facilities go, you know, I talked about double checking blueprints, making sure if we do a remodel, make sure you have the original blueprints of the current structure and make sure it's accurate. Talked about testing emergency shut offs, recycling materials whenever possible. Really good point, engaging with local officials, DNR, focus on energy that can be partners and making sure the project goes smoothly. And talked about it might be the best option if, when you're doing HVAC and electrical and IT and all that, to try to keep it with local businesses as possible so that they're close by in case you need support. And also, you would know better than I, but some of these systems run on the same computer systems or, you know, make sure they're all compatible so that when you're putting systems together, they can all run together. Talked about the importance of communication, you know, keeping the parents and staff updated as far as where to park during construction and, you know, if school schedules change, temporary entrances, stuff like that. So that was really good. Next thing I went to a presentation on college and career readiness. So it was interesting, a group called Redefining Ready looked into some research as far as what above and beyond kind of the usual things that we use like ACT scores can help determine whether kids are most likely to succeed in college or in a career. And they determined that, just for discussion, that college ready would be a GPA over 2.8 if they've even taken an AP exam or taken an AP course. Not whether they passed, whether they've just taken it. If they've taken Algebra II, that is a good sign that they're ready. Or if they've done dual college credit in English or a math course. And then they define career ready as 90% attendance, which I thought was interesting. Whether they do community service, whether they have work experience. And there's something called a career pathway course that you can take through a technical college. You might be familiar with that, but if they've taken that, then there's just some criteria to determine whether kids are career ready. So I thought that was really interesting and there's a link to the website, it's there. Commitment? Yeah, yeah. Right, like a habit of commitment, you mean? Yeah. You know, and then there were lots of presentations on running effective board meetings and having good board superintendent relationships and how to come to decisions and all that kind of stuff. So it was very good to think about. You know, talked about, they mentioned behavioral norms, just kind of things that you would agree upon going into a meeting. You know, common sense stuff like pay attention, listen to each other, feel free to put ideas on the table and speak up. Presume positive intentions, which I think is important. You know, basically just treating the room with respect, you know, provide data. You know, I think those are all good things that we could follow. They made some interesting comments about putting together an agenda, you know, like, you know, why is this item on the agenda? You know, what decision needs to be made? What is the goal, you know, of the item on the agenda? I thought that was interesting. Some boards, they read their strategic plan or highlights of the strategic plan before each board meeting, it's kind of a reminder. I thought that was interesting. And then they talked about some methods to reach difficult decisions. They talked about holding community forum and something called an affinity process where basically you get people in a group to write down, like, say, the topic's new school. You know, you write five things that you think are important about a new school, and then you throw them ahead and then you basically, you know, associate them in terms of themes and prioritize them. And, you know, which ones have affinity, right, similarities. So you'd gather similar thoughts from different people to help guide decisions. I thought that was interesting. They talked about using a pro and con list, you know, like a dry erase board where we would just do pros and cons before we make a decision. How do we maximize the pros? How do we mitigate the cons? They showed something called mind mapping, which is basically doing a diagram on, let's say we wanted to talk about morale, staff morale or whatever. And we would basically try to map all the issues that maybe affect staff morale so that we can better understand, you know, the big picture of everything that plays a role. So I thought that was, those are nice things that maybe we could, like tools we could use to help make certain decisions or be better able to understand things. I think that what would be nice to do maybe this summer, and I know that we're going to be in the throes of project planning after the referendum. But I think it'd be nice to do, I mean, I want to call it retreat for lack of a better word, but basically a meeting where we basically kind of talk about what we want for the school year. Goals for ourselves, you know, do we want to collect any data? Do we want to do any surveys? Do we even, how do you want to engage the community? You know, how do we want to pull the staff, students just to get their input? Are there any community stakeholders that we want to be more involved with? You know, whether it's city council or, you know, other social groups, churches, parent groups, youth groups, et cetera. So this is a, this is basically an example of some surveys that we could use on a regular basis to try to get more data and input and information to help guide some decisions we want to do. So that was just an example of something we could use, but. There were a lot of ideas that I'm not sharing today that I think that would be good for us to contemplate that people would be agreeable to kind of just. And even talk about just some general big picture issues for the year, if we can find time to, you know, schedule. I thought this summer would be okay, but overall it was a great experience, you know, it's just a ton to learn. As a rookie, putting up board member, I appreciated just kind of soaking it all in.
Any questions for Dr. Dunn?
I do. So your first school board convention, I don't know if you had any expectations going into it. Tell us where we're going to, I've never been to one.
I think it's, I mean, if as much as the board could go, I think we should go. And I think it's a good chance, it's a good opportunity just not only for us to just bond socially and just consider each other personally. And not only just to be re-inspired about why we do this, but it's also a good like brainstorming, you know? You're like rubbing elbows with all of the board members and saying, hey, we got this same problem, how are you guys solving it? Or, you know, what firm are you guys using? Or, you know, how are you recruiting for a principal? Or, you know, what policies do you use for this? You know? It's a lot of just getting great ideas from people that are struggling with the same issues that we are, same school sizes, you know, up and down the line. And it would be nice to just kind of take those questions and ideas that we learned and just kind of chew the cud together so that we can maybe get on the same page for a few things. So I would recommend it, you know? There were nice events in the evenings and I was never bored, you know? You can pick and choose what you go to.
I think the opportunity to discuss, I mean, you and I had a couple of conversations around some things, and I think you kind of have to be careful that if it's for board members, it becomes a quorum.
Sure.
But the opportunity to talk about, do some of these things apply? How do they apply and can we use them back home? I think some of those conversations are really good because there's less of a distraction, you know? It's like, okay, we need to wrap the meeting up and you know what, tomorrow everybody's back doing what they normally do. Where here it's a few days where you can really kind of talk about it. It's like, well, you know what, tomorrow this session's done, I'm going to go with that, maybe that helps me or helps us with another conversation or help us focus. So I think there is some positive to gain out of those kinds of conversations at a school or convention like that.
How do they select the speakers? And like Joel was referring to, Little Shoe School District, I think these aren't low performing districts, that?
No, well, I don't want to, it's hard to get picked, and I say that, this is going to sound really arrogant, but, I mean, I spoke at it last year. And that was not the first time I applied. So it takes a while, they want to see evidence of, you know, the work that you have been doing for your district. And exactly, this is a big time deal, there are like 2,000 people there, so they're not going to pull in somebody that isn't qualified or isn't going to give good information. With that said, you apply to speak. So the call for presentations, I think you see it in your WASC emails, comes out in like June, and then you can fill out a call for proposal and submit it.
I didn't know that. So with your new school last year, you were invited after you applied?
Correct.
On the basis of our report card score?
No, I submitted mine on, you know, what a communications person could do for a district who may not have one.
Okay.
And I did it with the Howard Sawamaco School District, so a larger school district, but we formed our positions at the same time. So they're similar in some ways, different in the others, and the idea was you can take my job and make it fit your district. There's no cookie cutter that works for everybody, so that was ours.
I mean, certainly where we were ranked among our peers.
Well.
Did anybody ask you about that, Doc, when you were down there?
Yeah, I mean, there's no, I worked the state school PR booth for a few hours because I'm vice president. And when people come around and they ask you where you found, and I say, "Matter of point." I don't think I had to tell one person, say, where is that? Why is that? They either had a story or they knew or they were familiar with us for some reason, so I think our name supersedes us.
Good.
We have a positive reputation, that was clear.
Good.
But, you know, I think the concern is that these conventions are just full of people trying to sell you something. And, you know, the nice thing is that there's a whole exhibit hall full of vendors that are trying to sell you something. You can either go in there and rub elbows or you can stay away from there. And that was an easy choice for me, you know? But to your point, some of these school districts presented with, say, their design firm, you know? Or some of them presented about how surveys helped them be a better school district and the firm selling the surveys were there to explain how their surveys work. So, I mean, there's, the presentation's sometimes linked to a vendor, but you don't have to go that step. I mean, it's really just saying, hmm, you know, should we do something like that for our district? Would we benefit from that? Not necessarily do we need to use that vendor, but is this something that might be worth our investment or just our time? And a lot of them were not vendor related, they were just fellow superintendents or fellow board members. Or panelists saying, hey, this is how we tackle this problem and we were successful.
The college readiness information that you brought back, so how do we utilize that? What do you do now to get our school college, our kids college ready?
Well, so I'll send you this with the links to the website and what they're all working on to develop these criteria. But basically, I think we should decide as a board what expectations we want to set for the district academically, you know, and work with, you know, mid- And work with, you know, midsection administration to say, what are some real estate goals? And we can use this information to say, hey, what do you think about requiring algebra two for all kids? Or what do you think about community service, you know? Oh, there was something about two or more extracurriculars? You know, should we, how many kids do we have here that aren't in any co-curriculars? You know, and how do we address that problem? Do we need more co-curriculars or do we need to do more recruiting? Or, you know, if we feel like that's an important thing for kids to be more ready for the next step, where do we, what are our deficiencies and gaps and how do we fill those gaps? So it just helps us kind of steer our vision a little bit as far as where we need to improve.
Thank you. Good information.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's move on to number three. Make up 10 hours.
Currently, the district sits at, I shouldn't, let me back it up, not the district. The middle school, high school sits at a need to make up 28 hours of instruction. So that's about, that's about four days. We get right around seven hours a day of instruction. What's that?
It goes your spring break.
Well, we have a plan in place that utilizes at the high school, middle school, high school level. February 22nd, there is a speaker coming in. That speaker can work just with the elementary staff. So we wouldn't impact that speaker and the plan for that day for the elementary staff. The middle school, high school, six through 12 would be in session all day. We would utilize a partial day on Good Friday. Again, middle school, high school, we're the ones that have to make up days. We're, we're supposed to have 1,137 hours of instruction.
And the elementary school is not?
1,050. They're very okay still. Then we would look at adding 10 minutes to the day in this building. And, and the conversation with staff was to simply have a homeroom and have students in your classrooms at 7:50. So it doesn't impact bus schedules. It wouldn't impact pickup times or drop off times at the elementary school. If we add 10 minutes to each day starting next week, we would, we would get our time. However, with the weather forecast being what it is for tomorrow, if there is another day off, again, we're still only impacting six through 12. We would have to push back our final exams at the, in, and come back in June. So we can do, we can make all these adjustments and still be out by May 31st, I believe is that last day, that, whatever that Friday is. But another impact, which is most likely tomorrow. And, you know, weather forecasters are talking about an unsettled weather pattern for the next two weeks. Who know, you know, if it's a day off tomorrow and a two hour late start, there are some things that we would have to do. And it would involve coming back and moving our final exam days back a couple more days into that next week in June. So we have something I've worked with, talked to, a lot of middle school, high school staff members, you know, as an approach to what, what they feel is usable. Trying to get as much education as we can prior to coming back in June is, to us, more valuable than just tacking on days at the end of the school year when, when students might be, you know, we're supposed to be done, we've got this trip planned, you know, all of those kinds of things. So trying to capture as many instructional minutes as we can prior to that point is something every staff member was in favor of. So we're at, we need 28 hours. We can get that, but any other hits to our school calendar and we're looking at adding days in.
And when we, we passed toward 176, and that was with roughly three days.
Three days, yeah, yeah.
So we've missed roughly six and a half days.
Seven.
Seven.
With one two hour late start. So that's why we're looking at four.
Five, six, seven, seven, just a little late start.
Twenty, so that must have been a few more hours than three days.
Yeah. There was a Wednesday, so we don't have as many hours on a Wednesday.
There were, there were two Wednesdays. So that's only 327 minutes.
So Mitch, I'm sorry, you said partial day on Good Friday?
Yep.
Add 10 minutes every morning?
Yep.
Per day? And then something on the 20th of February?
22nd.
22nd?
Yeah, it would be a full day for six through 12.
Okay. Which they currently have scheduled off.
It's a, that's a professional development day, yeah.
What about early release?
Right now, we aren't, we aren't addressing any early release time. And all, I brought that up to an admin meeting and, you know, there's staff.
That's their dev all the time.
They, they want that time. You know, Matt shared that. I know that's true in this building.
That would be frustrating too.
Right.
Because the elementary.
So when you make up the minutes, Mitch, about 10 minutes a day, does that allow enough time to, to get all the curriculum that you need taught by these teachers?
Adding, adding the Friday, adding both those Fridays helps get back some of that time. A staff member just said, you know, can we talk about moving the end of the third nine weeks back? Because if you look at, we've had seven days off, all in the third nine weeks. We've had almost a week and a half, he said, of time off. So if we move that quarter back just even one week, and if we end up having to add time in June, it kind of balances out the third quarter.
Because the curriculum that's supposed to be, that's supposed to happen.
Right. And there are staff members worried about the upcoming testing windows. I mean, our ACT boot camp has taken a hit with all these days off. Preparing students for the forward exam has taken a hit. And I don't see the state making any changes as far as when those testing dates and windows are open and closed. You know, it's, at the time, you know, here it is, you knew about it. It's like, well, you know, but I also didn't know it was going to be negative 50 wind chill or we were going to get six inches of snow, right?
I mean, is a spring break not an option?
I have said to people that certainly spring break would be an option. I would be worried that my house would be a pile of ashes when I came back because we, we have plans to leave. I know there are other staff members who have plans to be gone at that time. Yeah, we can hire substitute teachers, but personally, I would not feel good saying we need to be here for spring break and not be here as part of them.
Yeah, I know. It's a, it's a unique situation we have this year.
It is. I, you know, I've been.
And we're not the only district.
Right.
Well, absolutely. And is, is there other districts utilizing spring break to make up some time?
Not that I'm aware of, but I haven't heard a lot. There are a couple that have come out though and said, we are not doing anything over spring break. They've, they have said they will not impact spring break at all.
I would like, Matt, does the spring break impact and we have no plans to go anywhere? What about, I mean, if it continues and we lose more days, is there a way we could consider Saturday mornings? I know.
Any, any, any opportunity where, where, where students are involved in some educational programming? You know, and that could be something offsite that, you know, but anything that can be used is doable. Matt?
One thing to add, we talked about this was, I think you have to do it ahead of time. You can't just create it after the fact. But if there's some kind of online coursework that we might expect secondary students to complete and then something that we, you know, curriculum that we'll put online, even if it's one day's work. I think the DPI is looking at allowing some of those alternative ways. So when Jeff mentioned the Saturday morning, a kid could do that, you know, within a certain space of time, you know, in an online format that may count towards that time. But that's something we, probably for next year, but we're just talking about it.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not there on Saturday, but. Hey, Matt?
What's that?
So would the online, would the time spent doing online courses count towards school hours even if it's done from home?
Correct. That's, that's what other districts have explored. Yep.
Okay.
It's more about, it's not about seat time, but about meeting.
Learning times.
Meeting, learning standards.
Are those courses able to track how long they're?
Yeah, we can monitor how much engagement time in those, some of those learning management systems. I don't know a lot about it. I just heard other districts exploring that, so.
So hypothetically, if we have 28 hours, they can do 28 hours online.
Yeah, you could do something of that nature. Yeah.
I mean, it's like, you know, somebody like Dottie, for example, if I had 28 hours, it could probably take me a full 28, but it might only take him 15 so that he gets the 28 credit.
It's, you know, it would be.
Probably assign a value.
It would be the, the instruction. I mean, you know, you look at, we get a day of instruction whether you showed up today or not. You know, so I mean, the attendance piece kind of comes out of it, but it would, it would, there would need to be some kind of interaction between the instructor, and the instructor could be sitting at home in their pajamas and all the students, you know, sitting at home in their pajamas. If there's some interaction, you know, some, some discussion and some learning, you know? You know, I mean, there would have to be something of value to that, other than just saying, you know, hey, go online for six hours and we can count that as good, but.
We already have some of those components, like the digital driver, digital driver's license, it was just not all online. It's just one example.
Can we get to that?
Sure.
When were you planning on starting the longer days then, Mitch?
Next Monday.
Next Monday, yeah.
So if we have any more snow days, we're either going to have to go into June or, or what?
You know, one, one suggestion was. Yeah, one suggestion was if you started taking a Wednesday and making it a full day, but you basically get 85 minutes of instruction. So you're, you know, you get an hour and a half. And in order to make up a day, you've got to do that too many times, which impacts what the teachers are able to do.
Right.
You know, and all the positive work that comes out of there. That's why we're really trying to stay away from that. You know, if we have to do one or two and we can make that well-known to the parents, you know, we're, we're going to take the last two Wednesdays of the school year and make them full days so people know as far out as we can.
I think there's something going on like the first week of June for the high school kids. We were going to, we were going to go on vacation right away because we kind of, because Ben has this, so we could miss something.
There, there's a mission trip, but I don't, I don't think it's on.
What is the last day of school for students? Maybe the first, maybe the first.
May 31st.
Okay. So if you had to go, if not going to be like the middle of June, you know, go like third, June for a couple of days.
Right. Third and fourth.
And we've done that with 180 day calendar before.
That's not like having to go to the center. We can.
Right.
So can we, can we let parents know that if we have any more snow days, I mean, we're, you know?
We have a communication, we have a communication ready to go out. You know, so if, if the weather comes in and we don't have school tomorrow, we have a communication that can go out and explain, here's what we're looking at doing. You know, 6:12 will be in this day, 6:12 will be in this day. We're adding time here in this building and, you know, so we'll, we'll get that sent out.
I think actually the kids all know because I've had several of my grandkids talking about different plans. So I think they know and they've told their parents. They just don't know which of the different ones they're.
They know the specific days.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so do you want to motion to that?
I just, I don't, I just need to make your, unless there's any, any true outrage that says, no, I don't want you doing any of those things. Come to June 15.
Just we're supposed to.
We've got hardship to get through too.
As they say, the state tournaments, wrestling, boys, girls, basketballs, you can almost bang a storm or storm it sometimes there, so.
Okay, let's move on to first reading of disciplinary policies and procedures.
Okay, this was shared informally. We said we would bring it back to this, sort of your first reading tonight and the second reading. So basically, we put together this for the middle school, high school students. Discipline policies and procedures. It lays out administrative steps, you know, so if something were happening, it might refer to step one. Here are consequences, so on and so forth, step two through step five. And then it is broken out, so discipline infractions and consequence. So section A, basically on student attendance. So you see, okay, if somebody has a code violation for A1A, truancy, unexcused absences, it references back to, if it's probably the first time, then you go to step two after school detention.
We're closed campus or can we just open?
We are closed.
You are closed, right?
We are closed. And then as it progresses, you can move up the scale through steps two through four. So school attendance, student on student relationships, so, you know, bullying, fighting, those kinds of things. And again, everything in here has a code associated with it and then a disciplinary step linked to it. Student and staff relationships, school property, protection of the public safety, alcohol, tobacco, drugs, and any other disciplinary infractions. These all have, coming back here, severity of consequences applied by the principal depends on two factors. The seriousness of the offense and previous disciplinary record of the student. So things that allow, you know, whether this might be the fourth time you've done this and we don't have a fourth time on here or whatever, you know? We may have to push this to another level that isn't indicated anywhere within this plan. It allows for a certain amount of discretion by the building level administrators. But, you know, this is similar to that plan that you all saw from the Madison School District. We incorporated some of the components from there. Schlesberg has something, Reedsburg has something. And a group of staff members who sat in and really hammered this out, so.
You know, it's actually the three that we added after the committee level meeting. If you wanted to just make sure that that edit was what you guys suggested, but I, we added the word, oh, through the use of technology, um, in this respect, fully in part, so.
Thank you. So there's.
The only guitar I have is the part where it explains cell phone use. I think it's down at the bottom. What it says, cell phone use can be used in between classes, not in middle school, in common areas or whatever they would.
That's a very, yeah.
Yep.
Is, I don't know if the locker rooms are common or not.
The locker room?
If I'm reading this. So I think we should specifically spell out that is not, where cell phone use is not allowed in locker room.
Maybe so. I mean, we do have it posted also.
Yeah.
Before you do.
And there's a separate locker room policy that we.
But you're right, I guess the more places we can put it, the more obvious we're making it.
Yeah, for displaying this.
Yeah, we will get that edited in.
Thank you to everybody that put time into this community. This is really wonderful. Thank you to everybody that put time into this community, this is really valuable.
Got to believe.
Okay.
We're done. Items for action.
Yep.
Kevin was able to make it tonight, he had another school council meeting tonight, so he was able to make it, so, um, hopefully, did all my emails come through that I sent out in the attachments in smaller groups?
Yeah.
Okay, and Angie has a copy of all of those, so. Kevin, thank you so much for being here tonight, and I guess I will turn it over to any board members who have questions in regards to the final, let me back up, not final bill, uh, FEH is doing some additional reporting for us for energy efficiency audits. So there'll be a couple other bills that will come.
This summer.
This summer, in order for processing that report as part of the agreement made. We had FEH's final bill, he would like to ask several questions, and I invited him to our last meeting, and they were busy with other schools, and I looked in.
So the packet of information was just part of some of the things that we quickly attached to email about mentioning it's too large to send. I did, again, bring the drawings of the Revit model that we created, the original model, um, for the design, starting by after the kickoff meeting. And we're all.
I have a question, Kevin, um, I mean, it's clear you guys did a lot of work and, um, started to get things ready immediately after the vote.
And, and on the campaign as well.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I think what it was just missing that maybe you could elucidate is just, maybe just a general kind of, I don't wanna say itemized, but kind of, maybe a general breakdown of what this, what components of the work this, the billing goes to, as far as, is it just, is it per hour time, or, um?
This is per hour time, if we did it as a percent of work completed, it would be at least double this number.
Mm-hmm, so, the, the twenty-five grand bill is basically the billable hours put in to the work that you sent us.
Right, starting in early September, first of September, when we had our first kind of kickoff meeting on the referendum campaign, Joel and Mitch.
So that's about how much per hour, Kevin, or does it depend on?
Well, we have six different staff working on it, so it ranges from sixty-five dollars an hour to a hundred and seventy-five dollars now.
Okay. Thank you.
So to clarify for myself, Kevin, you were paid, FEH was paid for the design workshop, right? And is that the last payment that FEH received from our school on, on this referendum project?
Um, I have to check, but I think so, but we were also obviously doing the real.
Right, which was entirely separate.
The official model, yeah, those were separate, yeah.
Right.
So the time spent on the charrette is separate from?
Oh, that's not in here.
Yeah, okay, just to be clear.
This is work that started in September, once the campaign started, and assistance with that, and then, obviously, all the items listed on this kind of single page that I sent over.
At this point, Kevin, the, uh, my opinion, the RFP with, uh, is it Wiseman, which is really new engineering?
Yeah.
I believe this school does all the writing on RFP, we instructed them to do that. Since, since the election in November, there was, there was no communication from the board to you as far as work or design to proceed with anything, you, there was no contract.
The school district reacted us to proceed, and we did so, and the board directed us to write an RFP for construction management services, numerous items, if you go back through the records of this, so we did the things that we were asked to do.
So I recall the RFP for the survey of, of the, the property, if you recall that. Mitch, as our business manager, I think you need to, you need to fix this, or if, if there is evidence that, that we instructed Kevin to, to write an RFP for construction management. I can look back at board minutes, but I, I do know that we did ask, we did ask for that, um, for architecture or general contractors.
Construction management RFP is what you requested, that's what we wrote.
And what else did we request, Kevin?
Everything that we provided on this list was requested by, by you or FEH to provide, starting with the kickoff of the campaign. Initial emails came from Mitch, phone calls from Mitch, and then we set up a meeting, and we met, and we reviewed the whole process for the referendum. We provided Joel with many tools to use in the campaign, Joel did a stellar job in leading most of that effort. We participated, we provided some boards and information for banners, we participated in public meetings, so much of this effort was completed during the campaign at the request of the school district.
And you have records for all these requests?
Yeah, Mitch requested most all of these services.
We did ask you for a contract, and you said you did have one, and, and we all know it meant that there was no contract.
There was a contract.
Then, then why, why did you basically get fired if there was a contract?
You'll have to answer that. What I heard was there was a motion by the board, that was a vote three to four, to proceed with working with us instead of issuing an RFP for architectural services, that's what I heard, even though the board has a policy where you do not have to comply with the other policies. So all these services were requested by the school district.
Certainly, if your issues in Belmont, and your issues in Interpoint, it's not very good PR for FEH, and I'm just looking, looking from the outside in.
Do you have a specific question? If there are issues in Belmont, right now the situation is four million dollars in your budget.
Good for you.
What concerns do you have?
Again, Mitch, put this to bed, we need a resolution to this.
If this isn't paid, we're gonna be going to the press, these are all requests that were made directly to us to provide these services. I just don't understand why you wouldn't pay what is owed to us, I'm giving you the lower number, if I, we've completed fifty percent of schematic design. If we invoice for that, that's over fifty thousand dollars.
A board member asked you, Kevin, to come with an itemized hourly charge for this, or whatever, whatever you have down here.
He asked for an itemized list of services we provided, that's what this is.
Asociated to an hourly charge.
With an hourly charge for every fifteen minutes that we provided, working for the district since September?
Just.
Are there some specific services that we provided that you have a concern with?
This seems very general to me, Kevin.
That's a timeline that we created at the request during the kickoff meeting of the project, of which you had four school district representatives.
Well, I'll speak for myself, I think we should pay the bill, that would be my recommendation.
Motion?
I'll make the motion to pay the bill.
I second it.
I would be sad if this board pays this bill. This is, uh, this is educational dollars that, that were banned.
Personally, I think we need a little more, I, I mean, I, I, I don't know how to say this, I just think we need a little more information, kinda like Larry's saying, and, and that's, and if we did request it, that, that's, that's a hundred percent perfect, I just think we need to have that verified before, because, I mean, something, somebody's school board meeting, did we personally say, Kevin, can you please be at this board meeting for everyone, or is it part of, you know, the plan?
Every service we provided was requested, primarily for Mitch.
Okay, and most of that, you said, was not on video, though, it was, and I'll take, I mean, I'm not saying I'm not taking your word for Mitch's, but I just kinda wanna secretly verify that somehow.
I will, I, that's what I'm asking for too, some evidence.
What about the packet of information I provided? I mean, we've, I've paid my employees, I've paid a couple consultants for work that they've done.
Is that, is that consulting cost in there too, or?
No.
We, we, okay.
Our, this design workshop that we paid, what, what was the cost to the district of that?
I don't remember what that was.
You should.
Why should I? I don't remember what the fee for that was.
We have paid you and your company for work done.
Yes, we've been paid for previous work, the work that we provided from September through December of twenty eighteen, we have not been paid for.
When did that design workshop take place?
The design workshop took place in spring of twenty eighteen.
All right, and none of this work you were obligated to do?
No, none of that work we were obligated to do.
So the twenty, was it twenty-some thousand that I would pay for that design workshop?
I think, I wanna say like thirteen, fifteen.
Twelve or fourteen something, man.
In that range.
What's, what's the date for this, and what's the dates for this bill, like from?
September.
September of twenty eighteen to December of twenty eighteen, about December eighth or something.
If I could tell you, to type it on the board, this is November, Kevin was at every board meeting I was at. That I know, if we were dealing with FEH, uh, FEH, that's from November, I can't say September, October, but I know sure he was here at every board meeting when I was here, or, or by him, or his.
Or Larry's contention, we did ask for that service.
Does, does that mean that we owe him twenty-five thousand dollars because he was at every board meeting, Tony?
That's what I'm.
No, no, I'm not saying that.
Let's figure out, let's put a dollar amount to, to everyone at Kevin's request, and what we got, is that ours to keep then, Kevin, if it's paid out?
You want me to leave the board here?
Sure.
What's that? Well, here's the problem, and so, um, you know, we, we had the charrette proposed to the board, and the cost associated with it, and then we voted on it, right? Remember, because I think, didn't you and Kelly vote against it, and then you had a meeting, and then we revoted once there was a more understanding of what the charrette meant, and then it passed, like, it didn't pass, and then it passed, remember that? Point is, it passed, right, but I think we voted on it, right, I think we voted to spend the money for the charrette workshop, if I'm not mistaken.
We did.
And.
That was paid for, Doc, exactly.
That was paid for, and we voted to pay for it, and so, where I'm, where I'm stuck is, we didn't, what, I, my understanding, we weren't given a cost estimate of, of what all these services would cost, say, hey, we're going to, we're gonna provide sort of pre-referendum services, uh, from September to the voting day, to election day, and then we're gonna start planning if the referendum passes, you know, it's gonna cost this much, or we're gonna roll it into the cost of the project, or whatever, you know, um. I don't remember us voting on those, on those services, um, or at least understanding how much all these services would cost. I know that in the attachments, there's a contract in there, but it's not signed by anybody from the district, so, my concern is, to Larry's point, you know, were these services requested specifically with understanding of how much it would cost the district, that's, that's my concern. Now, on the other hand, um, I can understand that these, this is all part of the process, FEH was our firm going to the referendum, this is all necessary services needed to get to the vote, we didn't approve every single service they provided, right? And, um, I think a lot of what they did, um, uh, including the schematic designs, the preliminary budget for the project, all of that can be reusable, you know, by HSR moving forward, um, you know, so, it's not the services had no value, right? I mean, if we got to the referendum, it passed, and, you know, maybe there was some planning stuff that happened between the time of the referendum passing and the time that we decided to go to RFP for a new firm for the project, um, that, you know, maybe can be in question, but, um, you know, I think when it's all said and done, you know, maybe this could have been done better, and maybe we didn't request all these services, um, and maybe if we, you know, give Mitch some time, maybe he can negotiate it down a little bit, but I'm, I'm inclined to put it behind us.
Kevin, would it be safe to assume that if you were still part of this process, this would just all be rolled into your overall fees for the project? And, and because, because you're not, this is the pullout of?
The timeline we set, tonight is going to be a public meeting on review of the design development phase of the project. So we would be well down the road to issuing, issuing the first bid package for construction for site work and renovations. That's where, where my issue is, is I think they were operating under a handshake agreement in good faith from our CEO.
Yep.
And when Mitch took over, he was under the understanding that there was an agreement that they were our architect, and we continued to do business, status quo, and have meetings, and all the things you would have as the process begins, and I think both parties were acting under the impression that that was the agreement.
And you know, we.
And then we decided not to.
As a board, we can't keep doing this, we can't keep having the people come in and do services and then decide not to pay them.
All right, so I got.
I'm talking, and going through this whole thing without paying them. We need to pay this bill, and we need to get beyond this, we have a motion on, on the table also to pay.
I got all checks paid to FEH, I just wanna go through them, we'll find out what the charrette cost us, and these do include the, the rough project, Kevin. But I think this is important to know. So the first one I have is a hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars, the second one is a hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars, the third one I have is two thousand six hundred and ten dollars, clearly written down. The fourth one is eleven thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars. The fifth one is eight thousand nine hundred and four dollars. The sixth one, this is from the rough project, is three hundred and thirty-seven thousand thirty-six dollars, these are all from Marshall. The seventh one is three thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. Okay, that's it. So, Tony, I was talking to Eric. That's a boatload of money. Every one of them checks, FTH got a percent out of that. I don't know which ones came to the referendum, or were for the referendum, which ones were for the, were for the, the ROP, which ones were for the desk collector. But I think we owe it to our taxpayers to find out what, what's going on here. And is this twenty-five thousand dollars, is it warranted or not? That's what I wanna know. And if any one of us vote for this tonight, that means you are very irresponsible.
Well, personally, I don't think Kevin needed to come in here with a total of twenty-five thousand nine hundred ten dollars, that work that he didn't do. If he did that, he wouldn't be a business director.
Most school boards pay it without asking questions.
Well, I'm not, I'm saying, I'm not asking you questions. All those.
Let's get documentation and evidence.
Those are paid for services rendered. These are services rendered. You know, you ask people, you know, you ask people to do things. They're not gonna do it for free.
You're doing, if I don't, that is totally, no evidence at all.
Kevin come in for a board meeting. Kevin come in for a board meeting. He's not gonna come in for a board meeting just because he's coming in, he wants to come in for nothing. You know, he gets paid for those things. Nobody's gonna do it for nothing. And that's what you're asking people to do. When you ask a person to come, when you ask our lawyer to do something, we have to pay her. You call her up, you're paying her.
Absolutely.
Okay.
But I wanna, I want something in return.
So Larry, is your question that that we're potentially being billed twice for the same services?
I'm not saying that. I, I wanna, I wanna make sure that we're paying for something that we actually got, a service. That's what I, that's what I'm asking. And this, you said it, you said before I did, Doc, this does not do it for you. It certainly doesn't do it for me either.
Kevin, is there a possibility, is there a further breakdown somewhere? I mean, it's kinda like this whole, this whole thing. So I could bill somebody for, for doing a stone wall, but I can measure the square footage, and we know exactly what I did. Okay, but, you know, this is, some of this seems like, okay, well, Kevin said it. I mean, I, I'm not saying that you didn't do the work, but is there anything that can somehow put numbers on some of these certain things that we know? More, more positive.
Basically, a one itemized bill.
Kind of an itemized bill, but just something to break, yeah, maybe to break things down for, for us. Look, I, I'm not saying I, I don't wanna stiff you. I don't want, you know, any of that. I just need more personnel too. Does that, I know you understand what I'm saying. Would that be possible somehow?
Everybody does a timesheet in my company.
And that's kinda what this is.
I can give you a record of everybody's time.
And that's, I, I don't.
So when I do my timesheet, and I spend an hour and a half on a minimum point task, sometimes I put a task of what I did, but usually I don't. I don't say, I wrote the RFP, or the civil engineer today.
Yep, I understand that.
So what I can give you is timesheets, a summary of the six people that I had assigned to the project, and the hours that they spent on your project.
So when my minimum point taxpayers paid you two hundred seventy-two thousand dollars, you need to charge for every meeting you come to?
Yes, I charge for every meeting I come to. That's right. So you'll remember when I came and interviewed for the project after you issued the RFP, I showed that we would give you a credit of this amount toward the total fee of the project. What that would have meant was all of the referendum services that we provided to make sure that your first referendum that you asked us to participate in passed, I would be giving to you for free. And all the conceptual design that was extra in addition to what we'd be doing, I'd be giving to the district for free. So, yeah. It was the first thing we noted on our fee. All you gotta do is go back and look at it. Our fee showed that that would be a credit amount. Back to the district.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anybody got anything else they want to say?
I'd like to amend this motion to allow Mitch to get more information for us until next month.
Do we ever do this?
Yeah, the motion was made by Doc.
I'm all for the more information. I would agree with that.
Do we wanna take all this for one month?
Well, uh, I don't think we need to wait that long to, to find out. But I, I would object to getting a little more information if we're able to. I think that's reasonable.
How long do you think, Kevin, it would take you to get us copies, in essence, of those timesheets, the hours put in? And then, and the rates for those employees?
Couple weeks.
And we'll just postpone it for a month?
And I'd like to see verification of what we actually asked for. Especially after the, after the election. And then the contract of the design workshop and what that all entailed.
Let's give a credit, or a copy of that credit that Kevin was talking about, because I remember that, that he made something that I, I.
That was after we called him to the table. That was after we put it back out for bids. He did that.
Well, I'd still like to see it, Larry. So you're, you're okay with changing for table for one month? Are you okay with that for a second? What are our next meeting after? And do we have any special meetings coming?
Do we, do we need to book the table?
Yes.
Just a comment about the next month's meeting. I, I know that date I can't be here, the one with Stoneley. The date of that next meeting.
Should be March love.
March love, I can't be here in a way at all.
So, Jeff, know your opinion on it, and once you get.
But I can't vote in that, in that since.
You can offer your, you can offer your opinion.
We could, or we could move the meeting.
March is pretty booked. I looked at picking that open house, those two open house dates, and the, and the candidate form, and I have a hard time finding.
So we have a motion and a second to table.
Is it to table, or is it to provide more information?
Just provide more information.
Table to get more information.
We'll call you on it?
Yes.
Okay, Lindsay?
Yes.
Stathis?
Yes.
Bush?
No.
Chambers?
Yes.
Saul?
No.
Dunn?
Yes.
Basti?
Yes. Ask five to two.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Move on to consideration of special ed staff here.
Well, at the time of the year, where I've been trying to project our needs for next year, and I wanted to kinda get a, a jump on it this year, um, being new, so Marcia pulled, pulled some figures for me. This looks at just our, um, elementary teachers, middle school teachers, does not include speech and language, or the vision, art of hearing teacher, or any of the related service contracts that we have. It's just for our teachers on staff here, as well as our educational assistants. Um, so you can see the, the first column is, um, our costs. This is their salary and their benefits included, um, for this year. Um, and then, so at the elementary, we have two and a half teachers, um, half-time EC teacher, a teacher that teaches K through two, and a teacher that teaches three through five. At the middle school, high school level, we have three and a half teachers. One of them is full-time middle school. We have one that does a combined eighth grade, ninth grade, so she's a middle school, high school combo. And then one and a half teachers, um, at the high school level as well. Currently, we have fifteen instructional assistants. The star is actually, does not include the early childhood instructional assistant, because it's from a different funding source. So if you include her, we have fifteen and a half. What I'm asking for the board is that we hire one additional teacher at the elementary, and one additional teacher that would be designated to the middle school. And by, um, the way that I would propose doing this, would be, we would be reducing our educational assistance, the number of educational assistants. So essentially, we'd be, um, not renewing or not offering a contract to four of our educational assistants in place of hiring two special education teachers. Kind of the reason for this, at the elementary level, I would like to see them broken down to only supporting two grade levels. Other districts our size that I know of, actually, at the elementary level, often have a one-to-one, like one special ed teacher per grade level. I, I'm not sure we're ready to go quite that far yet, but really trying to support three classrooms, six teachers, making sure you're getting in there to support literacy needs and math needs. It's just, it's stretching that person too thin. So I think this would allow us to really focus on being able to support, um, two teachers during an, an ELA literacy block, um, and really ramp up our co-teaching, so that they could devote essentially a half a day to each teacher at a grade level. Um, and then at the middle school level, I'm asking for a second one, so we could have one of our special ed teachers focus on ELA reading, and one of them support math. Currently, we don't do any co-teaching in math. It's all English Language Arts, because it's one person, and we just don't have the, the numbers to get out. So, um, you know, I, I kinda came into this, obviously, I wanna do what's best for our students, and as well as we can provide professional development for our, our educational assistants. It's just not the same as a teacher who's gone to school to be trained in instructional strategies and approaches, behavior management, those things.
So overall, the cost is less by your.
So I will explain the cost differential. So I, I, um, so that the teacher's salary that I kind of used as this number was sixty-eight thousand. I think that's going to be on the high end, because our first step plus a family plan wouldn't equal sixty-eight thousand, but I wanted to cushion.
This is sixty-five.
I'm sorry, sixty-five, sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Sixty-five thousand. Um, and I still think that would be on the high end if you took a beginning, you know, a step one teacher plus family. So this, you know, I threw some numbers up to, in case we got an applicant with some experience or starting in a different part on our scale. Um, the educational assistance, it's, that cost number is thirty-eight. Thank you. Thirty-eight, yep. Um, that is the exact median of the range of our current salaries. So our bottom is like twenty-nine, four, or right around thirty thousand. The top is forty-six. I just picked a number in the middle, so it could be a little more, you know, it could be a little bit higher if the, the people that were not renewed were on the lower end of the salary. But I feel pretty confident between the cost of a teacher and essentially kind of looking at the numbers, laying off two educational assistants correlates to the cost of one teacher. Is kind of how, how it evens out, and is, obviously, laying off staff is not something I enjoy either, but I really wanted to make sure that we're supporting the kids in the classrooms where they're needed.
Uh, is, is this proposal something you've discussed with administration and the department?
I've, I've talked with Mitch and Matt and Vicky just a little bit in our admin meetings, to let them know that I'm, this is kind of what I'm thinking. I have talked with the special ed teachers, um, about this. Um, we have several students who have one-to-one assistants that wouldn't change. We actually were supposed to meet last month on a snow day, um, to talk about that more specifically. But I know from my conversations with Matt, obviously, the more teacher-supported classrooms we can get, there are instructional benefits, behavior support, social emotional learning benefits. I, I, I believe he's in favor of it. Um, Vicky and Mitch have been very supportive. I think, speaking for Vicky, I think she would like to see us be able to get into support more of the departments, more than what we can with just one, one person essentially. So, and I don't know if Morgan wanted to say anything, or.
How do you pick and choose amongst those of their educational assistance who lose their job?
So, so I, I didn't, so we do, our, um, our educational assistants are monitored through the educator effectiveness program, just like teachers are. I actually haven't talked to Mitch about that, because I don't know if, you know, obviously, we could go by seniority, um, or if the way their contracts are written, if we would just use their, um, evaluation tools and those things. So I have not had that conversation with Mitch about what, how their contract is written, and what would be, um, the protocol for that. But they are monitored on an evaluation system. They're given evaluations by, um, biannually, so, um, every other year.
Any job vacancies, Nick?
You know, and that's, that's kind of one thing too. I mean, we do have some, some educational assistants who are licensed teachers, that maybe they would be searching for a different job. We, you know, maybe something intrigues them. We might have some that choose to leave. I think, um, I have, I have, uh, and every fourth Wednesday of the month, I have a meeting with the educational assistants, um, after school. And so this would be something that I would be meeting with them about at the end of February. So if any of them were choosing to retire, or, you know, knew that they were moving, or looking elsewhere, obviously, that would take a lot off my plate to not have to do layoffs. And, and again, it's, obviously, that's the part of the job we don't like, but I'm, I'm trying to make sure that we can support our students in the classrooms the way they need to be, and to get more access and more support for our students when they're in the regular education classroom. Any questions on the numbers or rationale? I mean, you know, I, I did a quick research on the benefits of co-teaching, um, you know, increased instructional standards, the collaboration between teachers, that really, this would allow us to, I think, work on our professional learning teams more, because right now, they're trying to bounce between three grade level teams, and, and that. I, I think there's just, you know, beyond the academic results, I think we'd see a lot of other improvements as well.
When, when do you wanna post these positions?
Well, that's one of the other reasons, obviously. I, I wanted to make sure that we had all, you know, making sure we follow the timelines, and I'm still learning all the timelines, so I'll defer to Mitch for that. But the earlier we post, the, the more candidates we're gonna get who have experience or training, and, and so that's another reason, is I would, I don't wanna wait until June. You know, I, I wanna get out there early, um, just as you would for any person. Um, you know, I have enough contacts at UW-Platteville that we could even reach out to future graduates. I have, you know, contacts at Whitewalker that we can reach out to, to spring graduates here, and, and really try and make sure we are the first ones with the best candidates applying for us.
Do you support this, Mitch?
If, if we can get more support for our special education population, I, I think it makes good sense.
So this requires board approval?
It does.
So I'm, I'm guessing this is where Bonnie wanted to talk.
Sure. Like I said, I didn't prepare anything, because, um, we just found out about this agenda item late today when it was posted. Um, so most of you know me, and you know that I have a son who has special needs, and you know that I will stand up for all of our students and our staff. I've also subbed for nearly every special education teacher and assistant that we have in our district, and I can tell you, they work hard. And if you don't believe me, um, come and job shadow for a day. A lot of days I go and take a nap, really. But you should be proud that nearly all of our students are fully included, and that's something that we've worked on over the last four years. And that does mean that we need more teachers co-teaching, because those students are not in a room down the hall. They are in the regular classroom with their peers where they belong, and where by law, they are entitled to be. So that you should be proud of. I know I am, and I brag about it all the time. Also, if I were given a choice of who's gonna work with my child, of course, I'm gonna want the most highly qualified person that's available. However, you also should know that you've been getting a lot of bang for your buck, because we do have assistants who have teaching degrees, who are working and making approximately a third of their, what their coworkers make. We have assistants who are, um, taking graduate courses to be a special education teacher. So I certainly hope that you will promote from within, if you can. I hate to see us lose any of our assistants. I hate to see us lose any of our assistants. I also want to bring up the fact that you shouldn't look at this as adding two teachers, you should look at it as replacing two that we've lost over the years. So correct me if I'm wrong, but we've had special education teachers who have either retired or taken a regular ed job or taken another job in the district who were not replaced. So if you compare the number of teachers we have to other school districts the size of ours, you might find that our teachers, teachers and assistants both are lower. Maybe assistants that we've hired a few lately who may be more in line with other districts. But I also would like you to consider, this is a dream of mine, having two levels of assistants where you'd have an educational assistant, you'd have a paraprofessional who has some type of degree and more training or years of experience or is willing to take on more duties, which some of our assistants already do. So maybe like in the healthcare profession, there's different levels. So maybe we would have three levels, assistant, paraprofessional, teacher, and get that middle salary a livable wage. You cannot live on an assistant salary, which is a sad fact when you consider how much work they do and how much they are supporting our kids. Our kids would not be successful at all if we did not have those assistants in there. They, they work hard for their money, they really do. So like I said, I hate to see UConn anybody, I really hate to see that. We need those people. We need that support for our students. So I also wanted to kind of commend our, our new director and our psychologist because we, we are getting those, from what I've heard, we're getting those supports in place that those students need, behavior supports and academic supports and socially. So we're getting some of those things that we've been missing, so that's a good thing. So, you know, in some cases it might, we might not need a one-on-one assistant for behavior because by having a behavior plan, being proactive, you were able to solve some of those problems beforehand. So, so it's a good thing. I, I want to thank the board that we have those two positions because those two professionals are working together and working with our staff. Any questions?
Thank you. James?
I'll move that we approve the staffing, special ed staffing for nineteen.
I'll second. Couple more questions for you, we'll include that in discussion, Jeff. So are you recommending not renewing for educational assistants in order to keep this budget neutral or because do you feel like...
I came into it wanting to keep the budget neutral for you.
Okay.
Yes. I would be ecstatic if you said, no, we're just going to take on the cost and we're going to keep everyone. I don't have a problem with that. But I wanted to come in with a balanced projection and obviously, we know these numbers are not perfect, you know, I mean, perfect, but I wanted to come in and show you that it could be done, that we can keep it relatively balanced and not take on additional costs. If, if you direct me to take on additional costs, I would do that.
Do you see your, your population staying the same?
I do.
Next year?
Yeah, you know, we've actually grown a little bit. We started the, the year at just under ten percent of our total student population identified in special education and we've identified quite a few students this year. I'll give you, you know, I'll do a presentation in May, but I would say we're pretty, we've raised our percentage in our, and by the number of move-ins and by the number of new identifiers closer to the state average of twelve, thirteen percent. So, you know, the number we have now is larger than what we started with at the beginning of the year.
One of your numbers doesn't fit in my...
Okay.
Your educational assistant, if you have fifteen of them now of roughly thirty-eight, it comes to five-hundred-and-seventy-thousand. So that's a sixty-eight-thousand-dollar difference there. I don't quite understand that.
Well, and that was just the median number. So the thirty-eight is the exact median out of the cost. I do believe that one cost probably isn't entirely in there, one of the new assistants wasn't on the projected cost this, for this year, so that part could be on.
You would be at least sixty-eight thousand off of the educational system of the current situation here, would that...
I would be maybe missing one number and it would be one of the people we hired this year, but I, I added up all of the salaries.
Okay.
And that's the cost that I...
I see, so yeah, it didn't fit your...
No, no, that is, I, I marshaled all of the salaries and that is the cost of the salaries that we, is the actual cost for, that is budgeted for this year, yes.
Yeah, I was just looking if you added two teachers and tried to keep some, you know, let's say two educational assistants really knocks the budget out.
And, and I will say, you know, we talked last month about our IDA flow-through. That number came back earlier this week or end of last week and it was a hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand dollars that we have a flow-through.
Oh, yeah.
That we are currently paying two of our assistants from that pot. So, I mean, if you said you wanted to not reduce the numbers or we wanted, you wanted me to come back with a, a more accurate educational assistant number later on in the year, we could reflect on that and, and still possibly keep the budget out of special ed categorically to the same.
Well, here's what my thought was, if two of these people would be qualified in the teaching role and you could keep all the remaining assistants, it's all win-win for everybody.
It would be a, a win-win for everybody, yes. And, and I, you know, I will say, I, I don't want, obviously, I don't want anybody to be laid off or lose their job.
But I was trying to do the math of what that would cost us...
But I'm trying to make sure that I, I look at this as what's best for the students.
Yeah, but I was trying to do the math of what that would cost us if that were the case, I can't, I can't see it.
Yeah, no, for, for the, the five-oh-two, four-forty is the exact amount that is budgeted this year for educational assistance. And so that, that is the number that I, that I took.
I think in essence, if you took the sixty-five and you took thirty-eight away from it, that would be that additional cost if it was a person that is an educational assistant now and became a teacher.
Oh, okay.
You're not, you're not completely getting rid of the thirty-five or completely adding the sixty.
Yeah, yeah, we're doing that kind of balance between.
And I do think that flow-through money needs to be looked at instead of just spending that, I just...
Yep.
Questions?
Yep. Yeah, I, I think it's a great combination of both. I know that we've also talked at our admin meetings about how we can reallocate some of that money for early intervening services as well, so.
Have IEPs changed that allow, that don't need one-on-one?
Um, we, we still have a population of students that have one-to-one assistance. I guess I don't really want an open session, I don't want to go more than that.
Sure, yeah.
So, we, we still have a, a population that has one-to-one specific and we have a population that have adult support in the classroom, which is how we use our co-teachers or educational assistants now, but it can be used on a broader, a broader span. And I think, I think really, too, through the co-teaching, not only going to benefit the students, it's really going to help our teachers in their collaboration, but in bringing instructional strategies and differentiation and, you know, how we can present and ask for products and, and all of the ideas that kind of the special ed, the specially designed part, there's those daily conversations that it benefits the students identified with IEPs, but it, it really benefits all students. So we see big increases across the board and teachers have that daily collaboration to refine and, and use each other to make the classroom a better learning environment. So I think, I think we're, we're missing especially at the middle school level, not being in those math, math videos and math classes. You know, we are at high school, but not the middle school.
If I could add to that, if you're the special education teacher, you really need to know that curriculum and it's hard to learn three grade levels worth of curriculum. Two would be much easier.
Yeah, and I, I think that's definitely one of the things too, is I want to be able to tell the teachers that they're going to stay with those grades. You know, what, what sometimes happens when we're kind of pulling our resources is the, the teacher co-teaches like in second grade this year and then moves with that student to third grade, so then she's learning third grade over again, you know, the content for third grade. But this would really be able to say, you can hear in and you're going to be second and third or the fourth and fifth or, you know, I, I think even at the elementary level, we talked maybe about doing like first and fourth and second and fifth so that they're learning just because of when they teach reading and English or like those types of things. But you get the consistency to learn the content instead of having to move to the new class. You know, I don't, I don't want to teach, I don't want to teach algebra strats this year and then I'm going to geometry next year and then I'm going back to algebra strats and then I'm going, you know, that volley back and forth is really hard because you don't have a chance to really learn the content. And so this would devote our resources to our teachers and say, no, you're going to learn the content and you're going to work with that teacher to make that class better.
Okay. Thank you. I have a motion in a second.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stefas?
Yes.
Bush?
No.
Chambers?
Yes.
Basting?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to the budget amendments.
Marcia's put together a list of amendments that we had to go through. Part of it, if you look at the top, the eight-twenty-five superintendent salary initiated at the beginning of the school year, all my salary is being taken out of superintendent budget. And yet my position is superintendent and principal, so there would be a corresponding and addition in where it's being placed into high school principal salary and high school principal. So it's this kind of a dollar-for-dollar swap to make the budgeting line items add up. We have a couple of special ed assistants. One was identified as the money was going to come with flow-through money and another one was regular ed and some of those, those account numbers are linked to a specific employee and those changed who was flow-through and who was regular ed special, regular special education funding. So that's why those budget agenda items are there because that is linked to a specific individual within the district. So it's, you'll see it's a hundred-and-eighty-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-two out and a hundred-and-eighty-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-two in. So it was basically taken from one account and put into another to represent a more accurate representation of where the funds are coming from or being spent from. So we need this, approval of this budget amendment.
I need most approval, closing the round.
Wait a second.
I'll second it, Jeff.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Any more insight into what this flow-through money is and where it comes from and how can we predict it for next year and...
I have not wrapped my head up. Well, now that it's finalized, I, I feel more confident saying I'm going to, would be able to discuss it more next month. I really kind of wanted to get that, what was the final number because Marcia and I were just, we knew it was close to this, but we wanted to see what. I would say a lot of it is, is just kind of, a lot of schools pocket some away for a RBA in case they have, you know, a student moving with significant needs or something. I would say maybe we just banked a little more than what most schools did. And so I, with, you know, planning ahead as we do the budget, I, I think that will be included a little more in ours, but I would say next month I would feel very confident in kind of giving you guys a one-on-one tutorial on special ed funding. I just didn't get to it this time, so...
You have a guest.
Tony and I can do it together.
There you go. You have an expert right there on the board. No, and she, literally, she just did send out an email.
I think Marcia emailed me Friday.
That sounds maybe right and I, I think I saw it over the weekend, you know, when I was checking emails.
She might have given sent it to me Sunday or something. I mean, it was just finalized in this last week, so, which is really pretty late.
Yeah.
I think she's, normally it's like Thanksgiving-ish, so. I will say that, you know, we, we try to take advantage of all the other funding sources that we have with reimbursements through the state too, so it might have just been that we were really good at getting some of those other reimbursement costs and I can explain those next month too, that, you know, just kind of offset. So I think it can be used differently in planning for the future.
Great, great. Thank you. Andrew, call caution please.
Lindsay?
Yes.
To approve the budget.
Yes.
Lindsay, Stefas?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Basting?
Yes.
Okay, potential tax.
One of the things that people need to decide is as you move forward with the referendum, are we looking at issuing the bonds and paying this over a twenty-year period, which would be an impact of two dollars and seventy-one cents on the tax base or two-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars additionally on a hundred-thousand-dollar home? Or Lisa had set up the potential of you issue debt, you make an interest payment, then you issue bond, you know, sell bonds again and then you bought half of the project and then you would have the final and you would almost authorize the entire loan in that's last issue, which could spread out your payments over twenty-two years. And if you spread it out over twenty-two years, then it brings it down to two-fifty-six or two-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars on a hundred-thousand-dollar home. The difference is it would be, if you did it over twenty years, you're looking at basically ninety-three cents more on the mill rate over a twenty-year period compared to the referendum that passed in November. So it would be an additional ninety-three cents. Or if you do it over twenty-two years, it wouldn't be additional seventy-eight cents on the mill rate.
Can we talk about, I got two questions. One is, why didn't we, why, why weren't we offered a twenty-two-year plan with the eleven-point-nine referendum? And my second question is, what are, what are the pros and cons of twenty versus twenty-two versus why not twenty-four? Why not thirty?
Well, this one, the interest is a big thing. Yeah. Eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-and-fifty-five more in interest than two-year difference from twenty to twenty-two years to save what?
You're paying that, you're paying that much more interest?
That much more interest for what, three dollars a month savings? Yeah.
Each taxpayer will pay an extra two-hundred-and-twelve dollars for the two years.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I see, so the mill rate goes down, but it's paid over twenty-two years.
Right.
Which in the end would be more...
And your first question was...
To save fifteen dollars a year for a hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you.
It's always been twenty years, but I had asked because the numbers were getting so high, I was like, can we do twenty-five? And he went and asked and they said, no, you can't do twenty-five, but you could do twenty-two.
Okay.
That's how it's counted.
And you, you run the risk on that last sell, what are the interest rates doing? Bond rates going up and bond rates going down? So you do run, you run that gamble that...
It seems like we've hit a low of interest rates.
We're in a great spot at low right now.
So if we would, so we would refinance at the twenty-year mark for the, for the final two years? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, in essence.
So we're trying to guess what interest rates would be in twenty years?
Well, you're, you're, in two years, what would the interest rate be?
In two years?
So that you're, you're refinancing for twenty.
I got you.
Yeah, I mean, it's always been money.
Right. Rarely, talking with Lisa Voison from Baird, rarely does any school district ever go above the twenty years. She said districts can't, you can't do twenty-two, you're running a little bit of a risk as to what happens to bond rates or interest rates and, you know, and again, like you said, we're in a, we're in a good spot right now.
I was initially thinking of twenty-two myself, but because interest rates are down, it's like I think we'd be better off just locking it and being done.
Yeah. So you, I need a motion from you to say let's, if we're going to move forward with a twenty-year note versus a twenty-two year?
I just want to ask a philosophical question. You go over at the state school board thing. Was there some conversation about more state aid for schools? I mean, I see in the paper about their talking to increase the state funding up to two-thirds and, and reducing the state or the local level. Was that a major theme there while you were there or just smoke and mirrors?
That's coming more out of the governor's office and his budget proposal and increasing the amount of funding for special education programming.
Sixty-seven percent for thirty years and it's never happened.
Never happened.
Right. Because you look at, you know, every year there is a transfer from... Because you look at, you know, every year there is a transfer from Fund 10 to Fund 27 out of the general fund to cover the costs for special education fund. If there was more money given to us from the state for special education fund, I wouldn't say we would do away with that transfer, but that transfer dollar amount would come down. And they are looking at additional funding for per pupil next year too, but that number, I've seen three different numbers, you know, as you start to talk about trying to put your budget together for next year, so, you know, it's, it's coming from the governor and again, then it has to get through both houses back to his desk.
Another comment, I'm not much of a gambler. I heard Jeff saying for 20, I don't know that in two years the rates will still be as nice as they are now, so, so I would fear the 20. I don't think locked in idea.
Now, question on the timing of this. So we were discussing this same issue after the November referendum passed and now we're talking about, when is, when is this decision set in stone? Is she gonna go ahead and start borrowing?
She would not. We would have, we have to pass this referendum, but for us, for fact, facts information, we need it for that. We need it for any other information we're spending or sending out, I should say, and then it allows Lisa to hone in on, okay, if you're looking at a 20-year, now I could do this, you know, because if you remember, she talked about the band, a band note, sorry, early on, you know, you do and split the funding over two years. That allows for local banks to be able to competitively bid for some of this.
Right.
You know, so I mean, by spreading it out this way, it would still be a 20-year note, but, but you would, we have levied for debt service, we could make an interest payment right out of the gate.
So basically, we're, we're making a board resolution that states if the referendum passes, our intent would be a 20-year.
Correct.
If someone made that motion, it'd be a 20-year loan or.
Right.
Bond.
Yes.
With this proposed estimated mill rate.
Yep. I'll make the other motion.
Second. Any other discussion?
I wanted to ask a question. Let's say you do this 20-year bond and in two years the interest rates are lower, can you refinance the 20-year and get the better deal on two years?
You get locked in, right?
Well.
I like the idea of locking it in, but I'm guessing one thing went down in two years.
I know we refinance some debt when I first came here and I don't know if that was on the Ag building or something along that nature, but I think we did refinance.
I think it was on the Mexico building.
Maybe, maybe it was that too, where we could refinance at that lower rate.
Probably just like.
Okay, we have a motion, that's second, do you have a call question, please?
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Doll?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stepas?
Yes.
Basting?
Yes.
I need that we approve the credit card statement and approval of bill payable. That doesn't include APH, correct?
Correct. That was separate.
Okay, I just want to make sure because I think we follow.
I have one question on the bills payable. The Dempsey Education. We have a motion that's second. I did.
Yeah. We needed your.
Jesus. Any other?
So the Dempsey Education Service, is that still for that, it's a writing?
Yes. If you'd like to entertain a couple of questions, Amanda Heisner is also part of the charter school grant and she might be able to answer some of these questions.
Juggle if it's ever.
Yeah. They are, the, the grant needs to be submitted next week?
Yes, next Friday, the 22nd. So we, in, in my report, which I can be a little bit, but we have 100 hours to date and billable hours to prepare the charter. We have probably another 40 is what I would estimate for that final bill from her. It'll be in February for March.
Does that money eventually come out of the grant or do we have to pay, do we pay her that and that's?
So being the, the really clear money part of that is that the money is coming from revenue generated by the options and education program this year. We have a surplus over our budget and when we knew that we were gonna have that, I contacted the board in August to ask if we could use some of that overage to go after trying to get the grant set up, so.
So you're over, over 140,000 for this year?
Yep.
Just because your numbers are so high?
Yep. Cause we're really good at meeting the needs of students.
That's why kids like that are on the area.
Just a, more of a note, we always want to debuff our CISA and those first services. Can't we compare the rest of our contract with them?
I'm sure we are, I'm sure we are because our contract is for a standard amount. Yeah.
Is that what Brad Jones works, is up at that school?
Yes, yep. With, and it's all in the contracted service budget. So at the beginning of the year, the budget went through with $15,000 for contracted services, which included Brad. It would have included a little bit of Dixie's work, but to be honest, it was really designed to be programming for students and so that was where the request for, we'll, we'll generate it from the program, but we're gonna need permission to pursue that came from. And then we also work with Sandy Peterson who comes in and provides art classes for students out there. We just had her finish up nine students earned a half a credit in a six-week session. So in an attempt to recognize that one teacher can't meet all these, we're trying to just kind of get creative about how to bring in programming and services to students and contracting gives us a really nice flexible way to do that.
Mitch, I have a question. The CISA 3 fee of 7,000?
Yes.
Is that, is that just a, like a general school dues? Is it, is that monthly or yearly or, and what does that include?
I believe CISA contracts quarterly.
Quarterly.
And it probably includes some related service costs for some of the special education students. Those are billed out quarterly for us. I don't know how much of that 7,000, but like we have our orientation and mobility specialist comes from CISA 3. And so some, some related services that we get are billed through there, so I would assume part of that is probably special ed costs.
We, we have an initial contract with CISA. These are the services where we want to take advantage of, here's the dollar amount and then.
And then they bill quarterly. They used to bill, I think, just all at one time annually at the end, but then we were losing, so they switched to quarterly billing so that they could reflect nowadays accurately.
I know we're gonna vote on a motion, but it says, aside, speaking of CISA dues that we pay from the district, at the convention I went to, I talked with Jamie Nutter, who's former superintendent of, more former superintendent of the year, who now works for CISA. He said he, he provides a lot of services to school boards and school districts at, at no cost, included in our dues that we pay, including like helping us set goals for the year or, you know, if they, you know, if we want to work on a strategic plan or wanna, you know, negotiate something with superintendent or, you know, set, you know, doing evaluations, he can help. He offers us services for free, so just something to keep in mind, you know, if, if we need any kind of consultative services, he offered services to us, which I thought was nice as part of, just a CISA member.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stepas?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Basting?
I'll defer to Amanda, Vicki and Angela and I'll finish. So who wants to go first or else?
We haven't been here in a long time, so I really don't have a lot to report on. We are trying to organize a Washington DC trip for our current sixth and seventh grade students, which would take place like July 28th to August 2nd. And, yeah, we might still be. But we have a parent meeting coming up Wednesday at 5:30, so for, for more information, so.
And a trip a year from now?
It's before 2020, yeah.
I've heard of that.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Much interest yet?
I'm starting to get some RSVPs for the meeting Wednesday night. Hopefully we'll do a few more, so we'll, we'll see. If we don't have any interest, we won't go and we'll plan for, after I retire.
What's the minimum?
I don't know if there's a minimum.
Okay.
Yeah. And we would pair up with, most likely Iowa Brand is gonna take a crew also in 2020, so we most likely travel with them.
Same class, same six, seven?
Um, they, they might be, yeah, I think it's their current six and seven.
What's the cost per student?
It's like $1,700.
Oh, thanks.
Not cheap, but it, it does include, it is a flight, so.
Oh, it's a air miles. Oh, that'd be awesome.
Flight, meals, hotel, everything.
Would you envision some fundraising activities?
Yeah, we, some of the teachers, we've kind of talked about that. So we'll see, we'll see how far it goes.
Yeah, I love the idea.
Yeah, so. I guess I have one clarification, since you guys approve special ed staffing, does that mean we can post for the positions? Okay, so I just wanted to make sure. Wanted to make sure that I can work with Joelle and get the posting ready, so.
Yep.
I think the only thing I wanted to keep you highlighted on, we, you know, it's kind of a busy time of the year and then we haven't been here, but the elementary guidance counselor actually brought a three-week Wednesday night program forward and she's attending, it's called the nurtured heart approach. It's a behavioral, sorry, I actually am attending two, but the weather's canceled two of them now, so, but it's a, it's working on challenging behaviors, positive intervention, removing the emotional energy. It's really focused on parents, but she had attended it at, I think, a mental health and wellness kind of a precursor and then she found this seminar that they were providing in Verona, so she's been, she's attending that so we can bring even some more resources back for some of our elementary students and who are having some challenging behavior. So that started, it was supposed to start two weeks ago and then last week it was supposed to be, so tomorrow night, no, Wednesday night, hopefully we'll, we'll get to go, so. Yeah, so that was just, I can't, you know, just another example of kind of how our staff goes above and beyond to make sure they're continuing to learn and bring back things that would benefit our students, so.
Remember to keep asking Angie questions. So I just wrote up a little thing partially so I can also give it to Joelle so she can include stuff in the newsletter. I don't want to do that again. She can give them all out or the.
Perfect.
Okay. So basically, we continue to grow at options and that's something that the students and the staff really celebrate. This year to date, we've served 28 students from nine different school districts. Our breakdown is as follows. We have four eighth grade students, three ninth grade students, nine 10th grade students, seven 11th grade students and five 12th grade students. Those of you who were around when the program was taken over from CISA will probably recall we traditionally serve just juniors and seniors in high school. There is a significant need in this area for intervention and support for middle school students. As we move forward, I think we need to really look at, I think what we're doing right now is working, but if we're gonna continue, I think, to offer services for the middle school, we need to take a look at some of those unique needs of middle school students and do a little bit of exploring around that. We, our standing rule is that we only accept eighth graders based on meeting the student, ensuring that they're a good fit, but I know that if we had a dedicated program, we would have school districts really seeking to use that, so that's an opportunity for continued growth as well. So this year, we're working with Arville, Benton, Blackhawk, Darlington, Dodgeville, Fenimore and Pec. We have 25 students right now who attend 15:00 in the morning, 10:00 in the afternoon. We've had three students already meet their graduation requirements. Our numbers that are really changing and I think kind of warrant some continued thought and discussion, when I started, we had three seats at the school and that was all Mineral Point was gonna spend, was the three seats, because that was what we paid for, that was at 25,500. This year, we've served 15 Mineral Point students and seven of those students have been on a hybrid schedule, so they're spending half of their day either at the middle school or high school here and half of their time working at options. I really think as we continue as a district to challenge the ways that students can learn, the time, the place, the location, the, the way that they learn, I think again, we have continued opportunities to provide services and work with those students who are taking dual enrollment classes, expanding some opportunities. So to me, those things are exciting to start to see how a program that was taken over out of necessity, I feel like is really starting to kind of find its place within a traditional school system. So we have the grant update, so we're applying for part of a $95 million grant. The first year would be used for planning and that would be about a $60,000 grant to be able to plan, do all the paperwork required to open up a charter. It would mostly be for kind of administrative costs during that first year. The remaining four years, we'd be able to receive some funding for training, transportation and technology, which right now, and again, we're still kind of finalizing that, but we're at $240,000 for that over the four years. So essentially what we, our goal is, what we'd be looking at is the student population that we need to have in order to sustain essentially the salaries and benefits. Virtually everything else would be covered through the grant, but it won't cover teaching staff, so that would have to continue to be self-sufficient through the charter. We would look at, we'd have our own board, that board would set graduation requirements and then we'd still have the option to be able to contract out with other districts. So students could either be members of the Options and Education High School or they could be members of their Darlington School or whatever school they're from, contracting out to meet their graduation requirements. So one of the things that kind of took us down this path of exploring that is that we have had, since we've had this program, students who have opened enrolled primarily for the purpose of being able to attend options. So at some point, we have to figure out, that could be fine, but one of the questions was, is there a way for students to be able to be options students without being Mineral Point students? What would that look like? And that was really why the charter question kind of kept coming up and we ultimately decided to pursue that. In reviewing the application that we submitted last year, we were, we were within a few points of receiving the charter last year, so I'm as confident as I can be without being the three different people who assess it, I really think we've made some nice improvements. We've really defined what it is that we want to do. The application is a lot more cohesive, having one person dedicated to working on it than it was when three of us who had lots of other things going on were trying to work through it. The narrative part itself is 25 pages and includes everything from the budget to the mission to the students that you're serving. It is the most complicated application that I've seen in a while, but when the state is receiving $95 million, they're gonna make you, have all your ducks in a row, so, yeah.
So is your program a half-day then for each student?
Yep, so it's three hours and then the students, depending on their needs in the school, either attend a half a day at the school. We have some older students who are working. We've got some students who a reduced day is appropriate for, so it's something that's really decided on an individual basis.
So it's all digital curriculum?
Um, no, we do Apex, which is the digital part, but we also have Pass packets and then we've got the opportunity to do some portfolio-based classes, particularly in the electives, based on what the kids are interested in.
All right, and also our, do you offer, for instance, a student that may have flown to a semester, algebra?
Mm-hmm.
And they take that algebra the next semester?
Like with, would they have failed it with me or like failed in a traditional setting?
Just in the field of here at Mineral Point?
Yeah, yep.
They can, can they take it?
Yeah.
Do they have to go to options to take it or can they take it here outside?
So that would be more of an Andy question. I would say that in a traditional eight-period day, it's probably more challenging, but we do have students who are working on the Apex that Andy and I collaborate on so that they can do that in this setting, so.
Do you offer any AP courses to Apex?
There, there are Apex courses that are, AP classes that are offered on Apex. I haven't had students take advantage of that. I have had students take advantage. I have had students take advantage of some classes through Southwest Tech Online, so that tends to be more of the direction that they've gone.
And not all of the students are APs?
Nope. About, it's a relatively high population, but yeah. I would say we're probably 40%. Yeah.
Nice work, by the way. It sounds like this is a growing program. How do you feel about, how do you feel about well-suited the current site is for, for growth and handling increased capacity?
I think that we're pretty well-suited. There is some opportunity if we get to the point where we can commit to more space and, you know, whatever that negotiation would look like for rent, there is more space that's available. In particular, there is another entrance with its own room that if we ever really talked about trying to do middle school, I would suggest just kind of having different spaces. And staff could come in and out of that, but I, I think that that would be a really good way to go for some kids, for them to have their own space.
So there's potential room at the current site for expansion?
Yes.
And just at increased rent?
Yep.
Yeah. And with that growth, we would be needing another staff person, at least one other staff person, so.
And we're just kind of at that, at that tipping point, you know, this is only year three. Year one, we were at the tipping point where we didn't know if I was going to be sustainable. Year two, we added a second adult, and it, and this year through year three, we're kind of okay, but we're also at the point where we're having to say we don't have any more room. And I think more districts are learning about the program. They've been very supportive because it's a program that works for kids. Kids often will return to the traditional setting, at least in part, and there's just some times that no matter what happens, things aren't going to work for a kid anymore, and so the opportunity for a fresh start is pretty critical. So I think, I think we have a lot more support for the program than probably the last few years when CISA had it. I think districts are really good at collaborating, some of our, our best spokesperson, people for the program, or some of the principals and special ed directors that we work with in different.
And I would say that I think some of the districts that we've contracted with are probably selling us to other districts, because we've had districts reach out who I never would have thought that superintendent would have been willing to purchase a seat, and they're reaching out now and asking if we have seats available. So I think the success of the students who are purchasing seats from us is selling themselves when they go back at the principals' meeting, or, you know, special ed directors' meetings, or whatever meetings they're having. I think the word about is getting out about the success of the students who are coming here now.
When will you address the middle school, possible middle school, whether then after the grant announcement?
After the grant, sorry.
Does the grant announce?
Oh, um, yeah, I think what we should know by the end of the school year, and I think that really forms our direction and our conversation. We would have, even if we, if we get the grant, when we get the grant, right? Say things as you want them to be when we get the grant. We'll have a year for planning, and so that will be a year where the program is still a part of the Mineral Point School District. And during that year, we'll have the chance to, to forecast out and look at that. If we should not get the grant, then I think I'd like to see at some point this summer, just the opportunity, and whether that's at a curriculum committee or whatever, to have some conversations about the program, about what the program needs to be, about the self-sufficiency of it, about.
The entire program or the middle school part of the program?
I, I sort of feel like the entire program, and I'm only, I'm only pushing that a little bit, because it really started as this like secondary thing that wasn't a part of the school, and it's, it's grown, and I think we just need to be cohesive, I guess, and move forward in the direction. It's kind of hard in my position, because I'm a Mineral Point employee, and that's great, but I also have to represent the needs of half of the students who aren't from Mineral Point, and I don't, I sometimes push Mitch on how to handle things, but I guess I just want to know at some point what direction we're heading, how we're making sure we're meeting the needs of all the students, what's a fair way to handle things, how we let the program grow and, and be self-sufficient, and what the expectations of the board are, you know? I stress a lot about the finances, because I still remember being hired with that caveat that it couldn't lose money, and if it could make money, that was great. And I don't know what that means. You know, I don't know if the board wants to see $5,000 in profit or $25,000 in profit, but at some point, I have to be able to know if I increase my students by 10, what's a reasonable amount of the expenses?
You kind of want a long-range plan yourself.
What's that?
A long-range plan for your options program.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's fair.
And I want to see how it fits. And I don't mind working kind of on my own, but I don't want to feel like I'm on my own either. I want to know that I'm moving in the same direction that the district is moving in, And this, I mean, the grant is sort of the perfect example of it. My contracted services budget is in the red, because we never really moved money from that over. So I don't know whether it's an agreement that at the end of the year, everything, as long as it's, you know, balanced, we're okay, or, or what we need to do, but I worry about things like whether or not the refrigerator is going to go out, you know, like every single thing in that building comes out of my budget. So it's a very different kind of look at it, so. But I love it, and I love the kids, and I want to stay, and I want to see, you know, things continue to grow and flourish. I just, I think it's fair to ask that at some point we come back and just kind of figure out what our priorities are.
So you're trying to actually make this a completely self-sustainable, correct?
Yep, yep. So it's, as the charter.
Okay, I'm looking at the 60,000, and then you're, you could get 60,000 for the one year, and 240 over four years, is that correct? So we're spending 140,000 roughly to get 300,000.
What's the 140 that we're spending?
Dixie.
It's like 15,000.
Yeah.
She's 10,000 year to date, and I anticipate another one.
140 hours that.
Hundred an hour.
A hundred, okay.
Yes. If she's doing 1,000, see guys, that's one of the.
I'm going to start writing, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I have zero.
Nope, that's okay.
It's not thinking that it's like, I mean, so you're like, it's only 14,000, where did I come up with 140?
But the fair part of that conversation is that.
Well, no, I was thinking if it was 140,000, I was like, why don't we just hire her two?
That's sort of the operating budget, is what the, of the whole thing. So if you've seen that spreadsheet, I think it's like 142.5 or something, aren't you at, so? Yeah.
No, this is, this is amazing, considering where we started and where it's come already.
You probably have more graduates in the short time you've done it than, it might be safe to say than all the years at CISA has run.
Or at least the last half dozen years at CISA.
I think, maybe that's more accurate, the last half dozen, you know, so.
Thus far, we're 100%, and I stress that to all of the children, that they cannot, they cannot make my hundred, yeah, I can't bring my 100. So it's, I think it's something that's really needed. I think schools understand the need for it, and I think there's a way for it to be, it's really, it's really outside of the box, and so I think that's probably more what the struggle in my head is. I, you know, coming from a traditional background, I sort of start to look down the traditional line sometimes, and it can't. I mean, we can do things and have expectations, but we also have to be open to where things take us, and that's sometimes hard to do, I feel like, in a really traditional setting. So that was sort of part of what brought the charter question to be, is are we going to be able to do a better service and honor the needs of our kids by being able to really think outside of the box and do that different, you know, we don't have to do the 180 days, we can do Saturday field trips once every six weeks or whatever, like the door is wide open with that, so. Thank you. Feel free to email me and come see the space anytime.
Thanks, Amanda. Do you have the contact you made, a cell number, or?
Sure. I will write it down for you rather than say it on YouTube.
Otherwise, everybody.
Why not? Probably ask any of my students.
So, high school, ACT testing and work keys testing?
Next week?
Yeah, it's next week, Wednesday, Thursday. ACT is Wednesday, work keys Thursday. We've had, as you know, seven days without school. So that means the boot camp has been impacted, just the continuation of instruction has been drastically impacted, you know, we all, everyone, staff, students, administrators, all have our fingers crossed that our students will do well again. We're confident they will, we're just not sure we're going to see the same results that the boot camp has produced in the past, simply because we've had so many days without school. But that's, that will be, on Wednesday, they're taking the ACT exam, which will take almost all of Wednesday for the juniors. On Thursday, they come back and take the ACT, or the work keys component of it. It's a little bit shorter of an exam. Kids are always like, man, why can't we have taken that one yesterday? Because it's more practical, it's more hands-on, it's more, in their minds, common sense, and so they think it's easier, and it's asking more of the work component kinds of questions. On that same day, we're sending our seniors off to Epic and Vortex for a field trip so that they can see, hey, there are some great employers in this area, you know, so if you're thinking on a manufacturing job, or I want something in technology, or I, you know, you don't have to move to Milwaukee, Chicago, Madison, you could live in Mineral Point and have a job in those places. So we're sending the seniors there. Freshmen, sophomores will be taking the ACT Aspire interim assessment, and so it'll be math reading, science, and English on the work keys day. So we're going to have our kids busy. In the last few years, we've dealt with, mom, I've got most of my classes with juniors, and they're going to be testing all day, so is it okay if I just stay at home? And mom would call in and excuse the seniors. So now we've got what we hope to be available, experience for our seniors, and to keep them engaged in that day while we're giving the state mandated junior exam. Personally, I'd like to thank you all. Difficult time, still difficult, but thank you for your support. Better news, Val Sal, our valedictorian, we came up with a computer and then hand-generated, double, triple-checked. Today, we had the pleasure of informing Matthew Byrd that he is this year's valedictorian, and the same pleasure to Madison Fall as our salutatorian. So they were identified today and notified today, so very proud. This might be, it was five students for sure, and it might have been seven. I'd have to go back and double-check that had a 4.0 GPA, and we had to then apply the tiebreaker. So we had a very competitive class, you know, so you look, I was the eighth ranked student in my class by six thousandths of a point. So I mean, it is a great class, very motivated to do well. I think they challenged each other, so the valedictorian and salutatorian definitely earned those things, not saying the other students weren't earning it as well, but it's just they came out on top based on the tiebreaker. So congratulations to both of them. The last thing I would share with you is our monthly budget comparison. So in January of 2018, we had expended 47.87% of our budget. If I go to this past January of 19, 49.17. So we're basically right on the same path as far as what we're expending, whether it's for supplies, speakers, energy, you know, fuel, all the expenses, we're basically on an even keel from where we were a year ago.
I just have a dumb question. It says percentage of the budget left is 54%. Why doesn't that plus the 49 equal 100?
That's a great question. I would have to ask Marcia why that is.
You know what I'm saying? You can think whatever's left is 100 minus 49.
Right, exactly.
Okay, just.
Yeah, it should be more like a 50-point.
I think it's because it's to the original budget.
True, we are spending some out of capital maintenance, or some of the capital maintenance coming out of fund balance.
It says there's 227% of the budget left, so I think the small increase from the original budget to the revised budget.
I see. I see.
Like interfund went up, so the percentage of budget left is 100.23, because the actual budget is higher than the original budget.
I got you. Okay.
Yeah, revised budget is 11,989 versus 11,587.
It's a revised budget. Yeah, okay, original budget, got it.
There you go. Okay. That's it?
Thank you. Motion to adjourn, our heads meet in virtual lounge.
Follow the favor.
I have a budget to post and want to stay a couple more hours.